The fifth board meeting on this nice, cool fall day. I mean, winter day. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Morse if he'd come forward for an invocation. Thank you so much, Reverend Morse.
Good morning to you all. Please join me in prayer. Oh God, source of all that is, we gather in this place with hope, opening our hearts to the world beyond our narrow selves. All those we love and care for and all those we do not know are entitled to respect, to dignity, and to justice. We pray today for the citizens of this county, and especially we remember the many who respond to the varied demands of our community, including those educators in our public school system who open the minds and enrich the lives of our young people, those in the medical field whose skills serve the women and men of our community, those who ensure the provision of clean water and the environment, those who keep our community safe and who are there for us in times of emergency. We pray for those gathered here who are called to elected public service and who accept their responsibility to this community of Dare County. We're reminded of the wisdom during Black History Month of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. From his Birmingham jail cell in 1963, he wrote, "We must use time creatively in the knowledge that the time is always ripe to do right." We pray that the commission will use its time creatively today in service to this community. We lift up our commissioners in prayer as we consider what Dr. King said about leadership. Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love. May our hearts open now with grace and love so that this meeting becomes a workshop for our endeavor where our common humanity and aspirations are honored and realized. We ask in the name of all that is holy. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Morse. May we stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the united space of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We gotta move it. Just for those of you here this morning, we're not able to livestream our meeting today. It will be recorded, so those that are out in the public wanting to figure out what's going on, they'll be able to see our meeting in full after it's recorded and posted on our website. There's a little technical issue out there. I'm not quite sure what it's all about, but we're not able to livestream today. We do have in our audience this morning, we have Superintendent Bassnight. Superintendent Bassnight, thank you for being here, and our Board of Education, Ron Payne. Ron, thank you for being here as well. With that being said, County Manager, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, County Manager. Got a few items this morning. For those of you that didn't have the opportunity to attend the state of the county session this year, it was full house, sold out, and we typically sell out just about every year within a couple of weeks, don't we, Ms. Hester? So it's really encouraging to see so many people there, 225 people, and that's on our website. If you so choose, you can go to our website. It's a YouTube hookup, and you can see the full presentation that we did on January the 23rd. I also had, just recently, this week spoke to the Leadership OBX Session here, right here in this room. I was able to do that for the last three or four years. It's a great group of folks and leadership throughout the county, learning about the ins and outs of local government. And once again, I had an opportunity to speak to them and share with them what successes our boards had in 2023 and what our goals and objectives are in 2024. February the 4th, which was yesterday, through the 10th is National Burn Awareness Week. Keep those folks in your thoughts and prayers throughout the entire country. You'd be surprised how many burn victims there are throughout the country, and if you'll just keep them in your thoughts and prayers and pray that we have no fatalities with respects to burn victims. Housing Task Force, we've had our first meeting, which was the 23rd, and we agreed, it was a very good meeting. All the stakeholders were present, towns, really, really good meeting. It lasted rather long. It was about a two and a half hour meeting, but that was the first meeting. We had to get a lot going. So we will meet the third Tuesday of every month in Room 168 here in the admin building, and I will provide updates on a periodic basis. Matter of fact, I've got a video that hopefully, we're trying to release that this week. Is that correct, Ms. Hester?
Yes, hopefully today or tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I will certainly keep the public posted and aware of our meetings and updates as the Housing Task Force continues to meet. And then finally, Vice Chairman and myself went to Greenville on the 24th to the Third Annual Water Summit that's hosted by Representative Murphy and Rousier. Very good meeting. It was the third annual. You know, we heard from many, many professionals on the flood and water issues throughout the state. They talked about mitigation successes that they've had throughout the state. The DEQ is developing a blueprint for the state to develop, and that hopes to be, and a plan to mitigate some flooding issues, and that hopes to be released in April of this year. There were conversations about federal and state solutions for flooding. There were talks about where the main flooding occurs throughout the state, and then, once again, more subject about solutions to our flooding. So stay tuned. We're anxious to hear what DEQ's plan is to certainly mitigate the flooding issues that occur throughout the state. County Manager, that completes my chairman's comments.
Chairman, that brings us to item two, which is our Employee of the Month. We don't have any February Service Pen recipients, so we're moving right into the Employee of the Month, and Jack Scarborough would come forward to make that presentation.
Good morning, Jack.
Good morning. It's an absolute pleasure to be here for the third time in two and a half years to present to one of my employees or one of the employees that worked with me at the 911 Center as Employee of the Month. A lot of people submitted nominations for this employee to get it. The stuff they said was that the department goes around for them, that all the stuff they do, and I want to go ahead and call her up here before I start talking about the rest because it's going to give it away. So Eileen, could you come up here, please?
Our plan worked to get her here.
You even had me plan my own party. Thank you.
I did. Think I've got to work smarter, not harder. So Eileen joined in 2013. This is her second time getting Employee of the Month, which really tells you about her character and her commitment to the county. She keeps up with the training and the expirations through all the employees, through North County Sheriff's Education and Training, as well as Office of EMS because we have dual certifications. She quality controls the 911 calls. She checks them to make sure we're doing correctly, and then we get our report, and we forward it to different stakeholders. She helps us order our supplies and keeps up with the ordering. She's helped me tremendously because when I came over to the 911 Center, I chased bumpers for 20 years, which means I was a cop on the street. And when I went into the admin role, there was no way I could have survived without Eileen. She keeps me straight. She's another set of eyes for the numbers and all the budgets that we have to deal with, and she's absolutely irreplaceable, and I thank her for everything she does. Every single morning, no matter how bad her day is, I walk through the door, and she says, "Good morning." Every single morning, no matter how bad it is, it's always "Good morning," and I really appreciate it, and so does everybody that works with her.
Thank you, Jack.
So, thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item three on the agenda. This is our Employee of the Year, where we go from the 12 recipients from last year, and we award the Employee of the Year, and I'd ask Elizabeth Riley, our HR Director, to come forward for that presentation.
Morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning. I'm honored to be here today to present the 2023 Dare County Employee of the Year. Dare County employees are our number one asset, as you all know. They give it their all to make Dare County the best. We would not be here if it wasn't for our employees who work tirelessly around the clock to provide our residents and our visitors. We are extremely fortunate to have each and every employee full and part-time. Each month, subordinates, supervisors, and department heads nominate employees who go above and beyond in the line of duty, employees who go the extra mile, employees who shine bright. The nominations come to Human Resources, and then the Employee of the Month Committee meets to discuss and decide on the stellar employee. This committee is made up of past Employee of the Months, and at this time, I would like to introduce those on the committee, if you'll please stand. Shannon Glaser, Friends of Youth; Kristin Stillson, IT; Stephen Stetson, Communications; and Kaitlyn Kite, Public Relations. Thank you for all that you all have done in 2023 to make this program a success. The Employee of the Year is chosen from our 12 recipients that received Employee of the Month in 2023. Now for the 2023 Employee of the Month recipients, if y'all will please stand and remain standing. Jack Scarborough, Communications; Jackie Tillot, Board of Elections; April Butterford, Parks and Recreation; Crystal Ambrose, Department of Health and Human Services, Social Services Division; Carleen Darcy, EMS; Dustin Peel, Finance; Brandon Reed, Public Works; Norma Miranda, Department of Health and Human Services, Health Division; Angie Austin, EMS; Stephanie Banfield, Public Relations; John Morris, Parks and Recreation; and Angie Grant, Department of Health and Human Services, Health Division. Thank you all for what you all do to make Dare County a wonderful place to work and live. You truly are our asset, and we appreciate y'all. Thank you. And now I'm very happy to congratulate our 2023 Employee of the Year, Special Projects and Procurement Manager, Dustin Peel. So this was very, very hard. Dustin has been trying to trick us into telling them all week.
That's not true.
It's very true.
No, it's not.
But I also would like Dave to come up and have a couple of words for you as well. And this is for you too.
I feel like I should explain that comment, though. I was considering taking today off to go play some golf with some friends of mine, and I just didn't want to miss this opportunity had it been presented, and I'm glad that I didn't. So everybody knows that's the context of that conversation.
Just quickly, I mean, you guys are Will, all of you are Will, there Dustin, and, you know, Hatters, High School in Hatters, East Carolina, and while he was working, got his master's at Pitt. You know, he and Matt back there spend half of each of their times doing 15 years ago, what, took three employees to do, and I know technology's changed, but on top of that, he's taken all the project management, you know. I'm involved, but not like he is. He manages to do it. I talked to our contractors, Barnhill, they asked that I pass along to you that he's one of the best they've ever worked with. Clients just couldn't be happier. Yeah, and at the same time, he's managing them, trying to keep the users happy with Bobby and myself standing behind him, pounding about budget and new projects and things, and he couldn't do it better. He just couldn't do it better, and there's so many things from rescuing us during COVID where we didn't know what to do or how to do it, and he and our internal auditor, Ernie, got us through that, and just if something doesn't have a home with Bobby, this is where it goes. He does a lot of different things, and he does them all well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Well deserved.
Well done, Justin. You're welcome.
Before we go to public comment, any of you all that received an award this morning, if you'll go right out through this door so Kaitlyn can get a picture, please, and we'll wait just a minute for the room to clear. If you have public comment this morning, raise your hand. I recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium and state your name. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light that will come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on up there when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. With the internet cut, whatever's going on there, I'm not sure if we can get Buxton, but I understand there's nobody at Buxton now anyway, so I'll ask again, and if anybody's come on, then we'll figure out how to get their public comment in. So with that, is there any public comment this morning? No hands, and I have no signups. We don't have anybody in Buxton, so we'll move on. That brings us to item five on the agenda, and this is a public hearing with regard to Avon zoning map amendment. And Noah, if you'd come forward and introduce that, please.
While Noah's coming forward, we've had the pleasure of Mr. David Twitty joining us. Chairman of the Board of Education has been joining us this morning. David, thank you for being here. Noah?
Yes, sir. Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. A zoning map amendment application has been submitted by Dale Petty of Surf and Sound Realty and John Robert Hooper for a rezoning of two parcels along Westerly Lane in Avon. The applicants are seeking to have the property reclassified from R2A to C2 commercial. Mr. Petty's property currently, the front one-third of it, the fronts on Highway 12, has a zoning designation as C2, while the rear two-thirds of the property have a R2A zoning designation, so that his property has split zoning. He's seeking to have that parcel completely zoned commercial, and then the adjoining piece to the rear that he's under contract to purchase it from Mr. Hooper. The rezoning would afford Mr. Petty the opportunity to expand his real estate office and build a storage warehouse that would help facilitate his offices and rental properties, so.
Thank you, Noah.
With that, we open the public hearing. Does anyone here like to speak to that issue? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Bobby Gray, and this is so scary to me. I've never done anything like this before. I've been a registered nurse for 50 years, caring for the burn patients that we talked about, and, but I've never done anything like this with the county before, so bear with me, this is scary.
Yes, ma'am.
The property that you want to rezone for metal building, the letter that I received says that it abuts right up to me. It's more than it abuts. It abuts is a line on a piece of paper, but that property really interfaces with me. My family, I'm a direct descendant now from William Gray, who received the first land grant in Avon in the 1700s, and I've spent 50 years in Charlotte with high-tech nursing, trying to get back here to the island, trying to get back to Kenny Keat, where my people are. Finally found a little piece of property that I said, "This is it." Felt like God put a rope around the bumper of my car and pulled me to that piece of property, and I spent five years. I got a good builder there in Avon to build a basic structure. When we got to the point of the walls being finished, I said, "Okay, I'll take it from here," because I knew nobody would do for me what I wanted to do. The idea that I had in my mind was to build a new structure that was storm-worthy, but that reminded me of an old Kenny Keat house, the kind of house I spent all my summers growing up with my grandmother in. And I have spent five years dragging old house body parts from dumps and junk places, old doors, old windows, old kitchen cupboards, and painstakingly refinished everything, repaired everything, and brought it in, incorporated it into the house. I think the best compliment I've had on the house was from a fellow from here in Manio that came down to fix my clothes dryer, and he walked in, and he looked around, and he said, "You know, I just love it when people take these old houses and fix them up and make them look like new again." Got an old black wood cook stove in the kitchen. The kitchen I've dedicated to my grandmother. You try taking and going and finding an old black wood cook stove and putting it in your car and bringing it down here, taking it apart bolt by bolt, screw by screw, cleaning it, fixing it, putting it back together, dragging it into the house. This house is so soulful and representative of what we used to have here on this island, and this property that they want to rezone, it doesn't, you know, when I look out that kitchen window now, I'm going to see a metal building. I did make an offer to John Robert Hooper last summer to buy the property, and he agreed to be back with me, and he agreed then verbally to sell the property to me and the amount I wanted, and so there was miscommunication, and he went to have his surgery, hip surgery, and that went really well for him, and I think he's doing really well with it now. But he kind of forgot about what we had talked about. He was out there on the property. We walked, we looked at it, and he said, "Well, Bobby, I'll sell you any part or all of it if you want to." He forgot about the all part. He was just remember, I think, and I sent him three notes during the winter reminding him that when he felt better, I really wanted to talk to him about it. But in talking with him in the past few days, there was a misunderstanding. He did not realize I wanted all the property, and he wasn't willing to break it up. He didn't think it would work for him to break it up and sell me a small part, and I was devastated, absolutely devastated, to find out that I was not going to have the property. I built a bird sanctuary in there.
Ma'am, you have about 30 seconds left. You have about 30 seconds left.
Time is of the essence on this for me because Mr. Perry has lots and lots of time and places to make money, buy property, sell property. You know, in a few months, I'll be 80 years old, and I don't have the time to do the things I want to do with my home, with the property, and with that property that's going to have a metal building on it. When we have storms, the ocean does come over into my yard. When they have that building there, they're going to cement over the sand, black asphalt over the sand. It's going, besides being ugly and the noise that it's going to create, that the sand that's there now will not be able to absorb any water. The ocean water will come around the building and flood my property. So I'm just wondering, I don't know Mr. Perry, I'm wondering if there's some way, after this meeting today, we can do something that would help him make money as a realtor, but would also salvage for me my little peaceful part of the world in there. Thank you for your time.
Is there other public comment this morning on this issue? Any other? Seeing still nobody in Buxton? With that, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public hearing, and it's with the board.
Noah, do we have a capability of putting up on the screen what our board's seeing here on this item?
Yeah, I can't read it either, Mr. Chairman. There's purple, green, and blue squares that don't mean a thing, so we'll need some explanation.
That that's attached with your packet, that's going to be the current zoning designations and usage labels.
Again, it just colors on a map. I can't figure out what I'm looking at, no.
Can you identify what they are?
Yeah. And I'd like to, I'd like to figure where Ms. Gray's property is in relationship to this.
I don't, I mean, I don't.
I'm not sure which. I can tell you on the map that the green is the commercial property, and the piece down to the bottom that's highlighted in green.
Can we identify the pieces?
Yes. Mr. Petty, I'm currently at that piece there.
Okay. It is situated on our screens like this, so this is the way we're looking at it.
So tell me where the road is.
So what are we trying to understand?
Highway 12 here.
Where's Highway 12? In blue and purple.
That's the highway.
Different zoning designations, it's the only way I can show you zoning designation automatically.
So, Noah, what's the purple?
What's the purple?
The purple, that one, should be an R1 resident.
So the purple's R1 resident, the green is commercial.
The green and blue is commercial.
And then the yellow light, where it says .25 miles, or that green outlined place, that's what's going to be requested to be rezoned.
But her property is.
Is where?
Where is her property?
Left of that, correct? Left of that.
Left of it. Are there other houses there?
Yeah, in that purple, there are.
Or pink.
The pink part, and it's, do each one of those little squares indicate a lot?
That parcel, yes, ma'am.
Other houses on all those other parcels?
There's the existing houses.
They are. I see.
Existing houses.
Yes.
Westerly, there are lots in houses. Where you see that .25, Commissioner Couch, I think you said. her property was just to the left of that green line. Is that correct?
That's correct. Noah, just follow up on his point. What's that red line that splits the property?
That's the end of Mr. Petty's property currently. That's the start of Mr. Hooper's property that's also attached to the rezoning.
Mr. Hooper's is the odd-shaped piece, and Mr. Petty's is the long.
Rectangular piece, yes, sir.
And this lady's tried to buy Mr. Hooper's, the odd shape on the bottom?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
But Mr. Petty owns the top part that's in green.
That's labeled real estate office, correct.
And again, we're not sure which one of those rectangles to the left of the green oblong shape belongs to the lady that was speaking.
Right here, I'll show you.
It's the one next to the 25. See where 25 is?
Right here. Okay. What about all these guys? Two, three, four? There's like four or five of them going up toward real estate office.
All those would have been mailed notification letters at the planning board meeting and the Board of Commissioners meeting. We have not received notification from anybody other than Ms. Fields.
And they are all residential homes?
On the north side, correct, yes.
I got a question.
Okay, north side. So I'm trying to picture how this is going.
Do you have a situation where we could specify a buffer going up on there?
Well, anytime in the C2, if it was to be reclassified to C2, if a commercial use abuts a residential use, there is a buffer requirement. If the rezoning were to be approved, Mr. Petty's use would trigger a special use permit. So there would have been another level of review by the planning board and yourself to, you know, implement conditions under a special use permit of a buffer. You know, you could specify it be a visual wooden fence or vegetation or the combination of the two.
So, and that's very helpful. Thank you. And the flooding overwash, I'm trying again to orient. It appears that Highway 12 runs through the blue area.
The dark green on your screen would be an oceanfront parcel. That would be Joe Thompson's piece at the Avon Pier.
Okay, so I don't know what any of that means. I don't know.
Well, maybe that would be your oceanfront.
So the ocean's to the top of your screen? The ocean's to the top.
And it's overflowing, overwashing all the way across Highway 12, past the real estate office into the property, down one, two, three, four, five, six lots into the, according to our speaker?
I'm sure that it has. With beach nourishment, whether it continues to do that, I don't know. But we've nourished the beach there.
Let me just add a clarification, Rob, if I could, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I'm trying to sort this out.
Body of water in question there. They're talking about the ditch that abuts. That's what the locals call First Creek. It actually runs from the shore side over there and goes all the way. Essentially makes the village of Avon an island. It's not ocean-related. It's Family Coast Sound related.
I can't find any creek, Danny. I'm looking at, again, blues and purples and-
You see the white block that says O and a quarter?
Yeah.
All right. That First Creek splits that white block right in half, and you can-
Steve, just help me with it. Thank you, Steve. Again, this map is very difficult for me to follow.
Well, I have no other way of presenting a map to you that shows the different zoning designations in an area when there's five or six different zoning designations without them being labeled as a color. That's the way the GIS map establishes it when you turn on the zoning layer.
Then it's my fault. I need to know more about learning the GIS methodology, right?
Or maybe a legend that shows one color represents what zoning area.
Well, each one's labeled with the designation C3, C2, R2A. It's all, it's labeled on the map.
It's on the map. It's in white.
I can't read the white part, or this part. Okay. What is the setback for building here? I mean, there's certain-
It would depend on which zoning designation. The C2 is typically going to have a 15-foot front, a 20 rear, 10 sides. R2A is going to be probably a 25-foot front, 10 side, 20 rear.
Okay, thank you.
Should be noted, too, that the R2A, which is the property's current zoning designation, does afford commercial uses, including fish houses, real estate offices, campgrounds, bed and breakfasts. So there are commercial uses already afforded in the R2A.
Is the petitioner here, Mr. Hooper or Mr. Petty?
Mr. Petty is here.
Mr. Petty, want to address any of this? Can we get him to address any of this? Mr. Petty, please, come on up. You've heard the discussion.
So the difference, what he's telling you is there are commercial uses that can be made on it today without the rezoning, but the commercial use that Mr. Petty wants to do isn't in that list of permitted, and he's trying to make it where it can be. And rather than change every R2 in the whole county to allow it, he's chosen to rezone so it only applies to this property.
Right. Okay. You've got the floor, sir. Any comments? Any action? Any? Nothing?
Well, we're just trying to, we're trying to expand our operation a little bit in Avon. We need some additional space to do that. Actually, when our property was, when the zoning was completed for Avon, and this one just got by me, they actually, even though my parcel on the fronts of the highway is one parcel, and so we, originally when I purchased that property, it was three different pieces of property, and we recombined all of that together in one parcel. But when it got rezoned, for some reason, I mean, they actually split a parcel. More than split the parcel, I mean, the line actually, the C2, R2A line actually runs through the middle of my building. So not only did it split the parcel and actually split the building, and we just, you know, it just got by me, but, so we're trying to get that rezoned. But then, to afford what we would need to do on the back in terms of a storage operations building, then it would have to be rezoned to C2. Is that, isn't that correct?
To have a storage warehouse is the list of permitted rezoning to C2.
So even though R2A does permit commercial uses, including-
The real estate.
Real estate offices to-
So C2 is the, again, the blue on the map. You said there is a legend, but I missed it. Did you see it be?
No, I didn't see a legend.
There's no legend. Each zoning designation has a white lettering over top of it.
Got it. So the blue C2, and the light purple is?
The light purple is going to be the R2A.
R2A.
Yes, sir.
Again, I'm not all that versed in every designation, so got it. So the retail or the real estate office, Mr. Petty, on Highway 12 is in the C2 zoning, and the light purple moving down the map, bisected by a red line, is what we're talking about, and you want to convert it to the R2 or blue-colored designation.
The C2 designation.
Sorry, C2, excuse me. Yes, sir, C2.
Correct. And actually, where you see the line now, between the aqua or the blue and the pink or the purple, that line is actually running through the middle of my building presently.
And why is that line there?
When the original zoning designation was placed in Avon back in the early 2000s, that was the zoning, the way the zoning was done at that time, there's been several parcels throughout the Avon zoning map that have split zoning designations.
But it's homogeneous, the same, it's the same zoning designation. It just has that line through the middle of it.
Yeah, I've not, I've looked.
Anybody explain that to me? I'm slow here. I apologize. Trying to digest what I'm looking at without becoming more frustrated.
Noah, for now, you want the whole-
The piece that's-
The whole piece that's outlined in green.
Is the area to be, being requested to be rezoned.
To go to C2. Got you. So what, the only significance in the red was the difference between John Robert Hooper's property and Mr. Perry's property. Is that correct?
Correct. The red line underneath the .25 mile indicator is the end of Mr. Petty's current piece and the start of Mr. Hooper's piece.
Ah, dual, okay. I was trying to figure out the dual ownership. I apologize again, guys. We were stuck on the, that's why I asked why the line was there. Two parcels.
Mr. Petty, what type of building do you foresee going into that trapezoidal area there at the bottom that you?
It would be, it would be, it would be a metal building is what we're anticipating. And we did something very similar adjacent to our Salvo office.
Probably the height that that building be, sir.
I beg pardon?
Height.
Oh, the height. You know, it's not that high. Probably the, probably the entire building, because it's relatively, it is a low-pitched roof, is, I'm guessing it's in a neighborhood of 20 to 25 feet, something like that.
So, Noah, would normal vegetative buffers cover that?
It depends on what type of vegetation is there. I mean, currently on the site, I mean, there's, you know, there's live oaks that border the property on that northern boundary. I mean, those could be left and reinforced with another type of vegetation.
That was my question. Looking at it, it looks like it's heavily vegetated. And would the applicant just consider taking down the footprint for the building and leaving the remained in live oaks in place?
Yes, sir. I mean, we would try to accommodate however we could, and as long as we could, you know, get the building on there. And, I mean, we would, it would actually be our preference to leave as much as there as we possibly could.
Got you.
Let me just add some context. You know, Avon is quickly becoming the biggest village of the island, seven unincorporated villages there. Their operation and others are busting at the seams. And there's, when the season hits here, which is right around the corner, March, there's going to be 120-some-plus people on the payroll. And if there is a win-win for both parties, for the ability to keep some workforce going, and also for the Ms. Barber who spoke, whether it's a fence or whether there's some agreement, some settle we can come to there, I think everybody can win.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Couch. Anybody else?
It's a good idea. I'd like to see that discussion brought back to us.
Well, I think the applicant is willing to do what he can for Buxton.
I do, too.
Anyone else have any questions of the applicant? All right, we have before us a zoning amendment. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like, I frankly would like to hear the applicant and the speaker discuss something and see if they can come to an arrangement and bring it back to us.
Well, okay, you got two different actions.
You got two different things.
Rezoning, you can't condition it. You can't do this. You either rezoned or you don't. And if it comes back with a site plan, it comes back to you as a special use permit.
Does that when he brings it back?
Very good. Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion, please. All right. It's based upon the planning board recommendation and review of the policy. I think we, this proposed zoning map amendment, excuse me, is consistent with our land use plan. And the amendment will allow for uses that are similar to the surrounding area, and we acknowledge the intent of the C2 commercial districts to provide for proper grouping like this to serve permanent residents and the general public. And therefore, I move that we approve this.
All right. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch. Is there a second?
I second it.
It's seconded by Commissioner Bateman and Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion?
One more thing, Mr. Chairman. They, Mr. Petty was correct, and Noah as well, in the assertion that there's some, I don't want to say weird zoning things, but this will not be the last time a zoning issue in Avon is going to come before this board. There will be more going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Anyone else hearing none? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item six on the agenda. Mary Pendle's here to present the annual report from the Elder Adult Services Advisory Council.
Good morning, Mary.
Good morning, ladies. How are y'all?
Good morning. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
I'm Mary Pendle, chairman of the Dare County Older Adult Services Advisory Council, and this is Maggie Dennis, our vice chairman. And we're here to present our annual report on the Dare County Older Adult Services. But before I do that, I'd like to say I enjoyed the presentation of the State of the County breakfast that was done. I think the teamwork concept was fantastic. And congratulations to Mr. Woodard on your award. You deserved it.
Thank you very much.
2023 has seen many highs and lows. Sadly, it was a time for us to say goodbye to our advisory commissioner, Jim Tobin, and Tim White, Public Service Director. Both have been missed greatly. Our new Public Service Director, Spencer Gregory, has been taking an active part in our meetings. So welcome to have him. We did welcome a new director for the Baum Senior Center, Jenna Weinert, who is making good progress with catching up to the other centers and the needed improvements for the Baum Center. Jenna's working on bylaws for the new Baum Center Advisory Board and also working towards a first-time Senior Center of Excellence, which the Virginia Tillet Community Center has held for 12 years. At this time, we have a full older adult services advisory board, which I'm happy with. The advisory board has made many suggestions and requests to better the older adult population of Dare County. The board started rotating their monthly meetings between all three centers. We updated our bylaws in 2023, and they'd been last updated in 2008. Requests for transportation vans dedicated to the Baum Center and the Pheasant Center became a reality in 2023. This gave these centers the ability to offer events outside of their centers and day trips.
Good morning. I'm going to continue on facilities. Each of the facilities is able to offer active living programs every day, and they have art projects, clubs, and one of the biggest assets has been the electronic sign-in for activities that has proven to be helpful, proven to be helpful to the staff in reviewing which programs are being utilized. The facilities are dementia-friendly. They hold Aging Well series there, caregiver programs, as well as giving back to the community with holiday food baskets, free health clinics, grief classes, and the Pheasant Center was even able to offer evening classes. So we have Special Olympics, senior games, and toy drives all benefiting our community here in Dare County. The growth we have seen in the senior fitness classes are full at all centers, and spring events are already booking up. We are looking to gain more recognition and interest with the 50 and better age crowd at the Baum Center and to continue to have the Pheasant and the Virginia Tillet Community Centers to continue as multi-generational centers. The older adults are still in need of improvements, the older adult centers, I'm sorry, are still in need of improvements, bathrooms, outside grounds such as parking lots, hysteria building repairs. Both the Baum and Pheasant Center could use additional space for the growing population, because after all, the baby boomers are starting to retire. And we are hoping to see you participating, or at least supporting, which I know you all will, the upcoming senior games this spring as registration has just started. And on behalf of the advisory board, we thank you for your continued interest and support of the Dare County Older Adult Community.
Thank you so much, ladies. Thank you so much.
Just a quick question before you go, ladies.
Got some questions.
What, yeah, don't throw one away.
I don't have answers.
I might.
Bathrooms? What's?
They just need to be upgraded.
Yeah, there's-
We have them. They just need to be upgraded.
Yeah, I mean, the Baum Center's been around since the mid-'80s, I think it's been, and, yeah.
There haven't been a whole lot of improvements made there.
You and I, we're in the Tillet Center all the time, and I think they're very, very nice there.
They are. They are. They're also, it's a newer building.
So you're talking about the Baum Center?
Specifically more the Baum Center and even Pheasant.
Yeah, this is beautiful.
The Baum Center is the only true senior center in Dare County. The other two are multi-generational.
All right, all right.
And it was the first one built. I'm sorry, sir.
We can certainly go out and take a look.
We'd love to just, we'd love to do it and set something up, take you around it, because I mean, it's, you'd be surprised at how it is, like packed to the gills in there. It's hard to, it's like being here on court day and Commissioners Day, trying to get in the parking lot. So definitely would love to schedule that.
It's like being here on court day and commissioners day trying to get in the parking lot. So definitely would love to schedule that.
To-do list.
As you have issues like with bathrooms, you don't have to wait till next year's report to tell us. You can give a call.
That's kind of where I was going with it. You don't have to wait for the annual report. Just we'll get it done.
It's one of those things we're going to probably end up putting, trying to get in the budget so, too, as well, because that's another, so that's part of it.
We'll get on it, Mary.
But there's, I mean, there's so much activity going on in all three centers. What this county is offering through, through these centers is unbelievable.
And greatly appreciated.
We do, we do. The fact that we've got that for the older adults mostly, but also for the, the younger folks too. But look at some of their, their newsletters of all the things that are offered at these centers. It's just, it, they're well-used and they need some upgrades on some of them.
Thank you, Mary, for acknowledging that.
Yeah, space is another thing too, but of course, the workforce can do that, but.
Thank you for acknowledging the fact there's three centers in Dare County.
Of course. They're doing an awesome job down south.
Oh, Fesden is just, Annalise is, is just, she's crazy. She's just going with all kinds of good programs.
It's not like there's two or three cars down there every day, five days a week, and then with the stuff going on the weekends, I mean, there's 20, 30 cars at any given time in those parking lots.
One, one of the nice things I think that's going to be happening this year too is with the Outer Banks Senior Games, which starts at age 50 and up, is we incorporated each of the centers. You always used to just kind of be focused on KDH at the Baum Center, but Annalise has taken over with Silver Arts down there in Fesden. There's going to be tournaments here in Manio. So I mean, there's everything. Y'all need to sign up. They got everything from disc golf to billiards to, we're doing a 5K. So I mean, it's going to be awesome. So, but we're real proud of our centers.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item seven on the agenda. This is a resolution to sponsor the Southern Hatteras Island offshore sand assessment study. Barton's here to make that presentation.
Morning.
Good morning, Barton. Welcome.
Thank you. So DEQ is once again offering the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund. We were able to use some of those funds for the Avon and Buxton Beach Nurishment Project a couple of years ago, and there is another round of this. We do need to identify sand sources for future beach nourishment projects in Avon and Buxton. We have enough for at least one more project, but we need to identify some more. So that includes geotechnical and geophysical surveys and, and vibrocores offshore to find that sand. And so it is a 50-50 match. So total project cost will be $500,000. Dare County would match 250 out of the beach nourishment fund. I would need a, you all adopt a resolution.
And just so you know, that's in line with what we did on the northern beaches. We're either almost completed or completed the study that we've done up there to find sand for the future, which, by the way, is good news. We got 30 years of sand up there. So we're in good shape and now we're looking to do the same thing down south to make sure we have sand for the future.
Craig, it's a necessary step.
Yeah, I'm on board completely. I just thought I'd ask one quick question about that. We hear so much about shoaling and sand shifting and so forth. And there's probably a technical aspect I don't understand, but doing the study, how do we know that in two years' time, oop, it's gone? It all moved 20 miles south, you know, off the Cape Lookout or something, as opposed to, we did a study, but, you know, sorry, the sand moved.
In a two-year timeframe, I can't answer it. In a five-year timeframe, when we go out there and take sand, we have to survey again and we will know each event, what the status of the sand is prior to and after that event.
As I said, my own ignorance is driving the question. I just don't know enough about it, but it seems like with all the shifting and so forth.
What we have found from the sand sources over time is they are, they are, we're taking it out faster than it's replenishing. So it's not like we can take it out and it regrows itself and we go back and get it again.
The sand, the sand sources, Rob, there's a regulation, you can't take but so much off of the, off of the pit or whatever you want to call it that you're getting the sand source from. So you can only take a certain amount of that off of there.
Right, right. What, what I was after though is.
What we found is it hasn't been moving very quickly is my point.
There's what I'm after. It hasn't moved that quickly.
I can't tell you, it won't start moving quickly, but up to now, we're confident that it's a relatively stable.
That's what I was searching for. Okay. Thanks, Barton. Okay.
Yep. So for instance, I think we had just had a presentation recently. It was like, say, the box had 30 million cubic yards.
Right.
Some might move in, some move, might move out, but we're talking about like a million might move out. So we still have 29 million cubic yards. It's, it's compared to what we need maybe 2 million cubic yards for a beach nourishment project.
I got it. It helps me.
It is moving. You're correct. It is moving in. It is also material moves out and into the box, but it's insignificant.
Excuse me. Barton, when, when, when you're talking about like 30 million yards is designated, is that the usable amount or is that the total amount of the?
That's what I'm saying. A huge box would have 30 million cubic yards of possible, like good material that fits the right grain size and everything else.
That is a depth that is usable.
Yep.
Gotcha.
That's just hypothetical number, but yeah, we've seen those kind of like 10 million in a one box offshore and then 20 million in a different box. And yeah, it does move in and out, but it's, it's minor because it is pretty deep water.
Well, we, we're often asked, can we continue to sustain beach nourishment? And, and the answer is always as long as we have enough sand and as long as we have enough money to pay for that sand. One prong of that, at least on the northern beaches, we now know, we've got enough sand to go on for an indefinite amount of time. On the southern beaches, we want to be able to quantify that as well. And so that's what this will do for us.
So will you read the resolution, County Manager?
Sure.
This is a resolution to sponsor the Southern Hatteras Island offshore sand assessment study, whereas Dare County desires to sponsor the Southern Hatteras Island offshore sand assessment study to identify sufficient sand sources for future beach nourishment events. Therefore, be it resolved, that Dare County requests the state of North Carolina provide financial assistance to Dare County for the Southern Hatteras Island offshore sand assessment study in the amount not to exceed $250,000. Dare County assumes full obligation for payment of the balance of the project. Go back to that. We're asking them for 250 of five, right? Okay, all right. Dare County assumes full obligation for payment of the balance of the project cost. Dare County will obtain all necessary state and federal permits. Dare County will comply with all applicable laws covering the award of contracts and the expenditure of public funds by local governments. Dare County will supervise construction of the project to ensure compliance with permit conditions and to assure safe and proper construction according to approved plans and specifications. Dare County will obtain appropriate easements, rights of way or suitable dredge material disposal areas that may be necessary for the construction operation of the subject of the project without cost or obligation to the state. Dare County will ensure that the project is open for use by the public on an equal basis with limited restrictions, if any, on public property. Dare County will hold the state harmless from any damages that may result from the construction, operation, and maintenance of the project. Dare County accepts responsibility for the operation and maintenance of the completed project. This is the fifth day of February 2024.
Move to adopt a resolution?
There's a motion on the floor about a vice chairman to adopt a resolution as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Barton.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Barton.
That brings us to one other thing while we're on the beach nourishment. Barton is working on a, a grant application for the Rodanthie Beach Nurishment Project. So we're, we're putting in for, and we've been working with the state on this grant application now for several months at least, trying, and they're helping us get it and trying to get it honed down to make it a successful grant. If we get it, it's like a $40 million grant and if we get it, it may allow us to do that project at Rodanthie that we've been talking about so long. So we'll see where it goes. Don't know yet. Barton, if we get it, when, when's the award date? Do you know?
It's typically at least a year out.
So we're, we'll get it in now and, and a year from now, we'll hear whether we've been successful or not and we'll see, but just.
Do we have that much time? Have you guys been down there?
But we just want to.
I mean, it's great. I just.
We are working on sources is, is my point and that to try to do something down there.
I'll have a little something about that in commissioners comments, Rob. There's, there's some good stuff going on.
All right, Daniel covers.
That brings us to item eight on the agenda. This is a resolution requesting that the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission hold a quarterly meeting in Dare County each year, and I'll turn that over to Commissioner House.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission holds quarterly meetings. And according to their, their statutes, they do have to have one, at least three of their meetings in the designated areas in coastal North Carolina. And since 2018, there has not been a North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission meeting held in Dare County. Most of these meetings have been held in New Bern, Beaufort, Emerald Isle, and of course, one in Raleigh. Which I understand is a central part of the state, but it is hard for our watermen to go down to New Bern on a, a, a certainly regular basis. And also the same thing from our southern fisheries down in Wilmington. They have a hard time coming up, up to, to New Bern as well. And originally, the way they were doing this is they would hold one in Richmond, one in New Bern, not Richmond, one in Raleigh, one in Wilmington, one here, and one in New Bern. But now they've condensed them all to keep them in the central part of the state. Our watermen.
How many watermen are in Raleigh?
That particular meeting, because it is a state commission.
Oh, okay.
So the representatives.
I just thought I'd ask because last I checked, okay.
Yeah. So that's the reason why I have, have, have the one in Raleigh is basically so our state representatives have a chance to be at, at one of the, the meetings. And Dare County has the, the largest commercial fishery in North Carolina. And for the Marine Fisheries Commission to make all these laws and proclamations, be it not having readily, readily accessible to our watermen to, to express their concerns is kind of troubling. And so I would like to set this resolution to the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission and also to the governor of North Carolina, along with our representatives, to hopefully have them come to Dare County, do at least one of their quarterly meetings. I, I think we're.
Stern letter to follow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I will definitely be at the Marine Fisheries Commission meeting later on this month and present this to them in a way that they'll, they'll know. So this is kind of, and also the, the North Carolina, the, the northern regional advisory committee, agency for the commission held their last meeting. They also passed a, a motion to have the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission to have a meeting here in Dare County. And this will help solidify our position to help ease that thing to come up. And I'd like to make the motion to adopt this resolution. County Manager, would you please read it?
Sure. This is a resolution requesting that the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission hold a quarterly meeting in Dare County each year. Whereas the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission, or NCMC, is a non-member board appointed by the governor that is responsible for managing, protecting, preserving, and enhancing the marine and estuarian resources under its jurisdiction. And whereas the NCMC does this by adopting rules and policies, implementing management measures for fisheries, and advising the state on marine fisheries within the jurisdiction of regional and federal boards and councils. And whereas the operating procedures of the commission state that the commission shall meet at least once in each quarter at such time and place as it may determine, except that at least three of the four quarterly meetings shall be held in one of the coastal regions as defined by NCGS 143B-289.54 and is provided by NCGS 143B-289.56. And whereas according to the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries, Dare County has the highest seafood volume and value of any North Carolina county. And whereas the NCMC has not held a meeting in Dare County since November 2018, making it a challenge for watermen in Dare County and northeastern North Carolina to participate in meetings and public hearings that impact their livelihoods. Therefore, be it resolved, that the Dare County Board of Commissioners request that the NCMC hold at least one of its quarterly meetings in Dare County each year. This is the fifth day of February 2024.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House. It's been seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That brings us to item nine. This is a resolution opposing Stripe Mullet Fishery Management Plan Draft Amendment 2 due to the outdated and unreliable data, and I'll turn this over to Commissioner House as well.
Thank you, County Manager. As you're aware, the Stripe Mullet Fishery has a management draft for the amendment 2 to further restrict the Stripe Mullet Fishery. And I went to the, one of the advisory councils on this that was reviewing the fishery and I, I was, basically telling you the truth, I was alarmed. Here is a agency trying to say, hey, this fishery needs a management amendment. We need to restrict the, the fishing for this particular species. But come to find out, the data they're using is from 2019. 2020 and 2021, data was not collected due to the, the governor's state of emergency, which limited what the marine fisheries could do as far as getting people together to do sample studies. Now, why is this, number one, it's alarming, one, because this data is, you know, three and four years old. And not only that, the stripe mullet species can be spawned and come to maturity in two years. So the data they're using from 2019 is woefully incorrect of what might be in order right now. So I would strong, and I strongly urged the, when I spoke to them, I strongly urged them to table this amendment until they can get further data, more updated data. Because it's kind of hard to say, hey, you know, on this data that's, you know, three and four years old, we have to make concessions. It'd be just like us trying to do from data that we had four or five years old. So I don't think that that this needs to go through. I think they really need to take a look at it a little bit, get some more updated material. Plus the fact of, in, in reading through it, not only was the data on the commercial side kind of skewed a little bit, but there was basically hardly any data from the recreational side of it. They said that the recreational side of the striped mullet would constitute less than 2% of what's caught. And I kind of find that hard to believe too. And also parts were brought up that if this were to go through the way it's, the way it's written, if I had, say I went on my boat and I went to the, the bait store and got me some striped mullet, which is commonly used for bait, and I've got that on my boat. According to way this, the amendment was written, I could be fined for having those two mullets on my boat that I bought as bait. So it's very unclear of what, what statute or what constitutes this. So I think the whole thing needs to go back under review, especially since the fact we're using old data. So I would like to make a motion to adopt this resolution, have it sent to our North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission and also to the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries and also to our state representatives. And Mr. Chairman, would you read the resolution for us?
County Manager.
I can't. I'm sorry. What did I say?
Commissioner.
You read it.
There's been an insurrection going on.
I don't mind reading it. I don't mind reading it.
This is a resolution opposing Stripe Mullet Fishery Management Plan Draft Amendment 2 due to outdated, unreliable data. Whereas the North Carolina Fisheries Reform Act requires that fishery management plans be developed for the state's commercially and recreationally important species to achieve, achieve sustainable. sustainable levels of harvest. And whereas all management authority for North Carolina's Stripe Mullet Fishery is vested in the state of North Carolina. And whereas Stripe Mullet Fishery Management Plan Draft Amendment Two has been completed and contains various proposed management options pertaining to the commercial and recreational stripe mullet fisheries. And whereas stock assessments are the primary tool used to assist in determining the status of stocks and developing appropriate management measures to ensure the long-term viability of stocks. And whereas the data being used on the biomass of the stripe mullet for Stripe Mullet Fishery Management Plan Draft Amendment Two was collected in 2019, and stripe mullet biomass data not collected in 2020 or 2021 due to COVID-19 restrictions and modified work schedules that resulted from the state of emergency declared by North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper. And whereas Stripe Mullet reached maturity in two years, further emphasizing that the 2019 data used in the plan is outdated and unreliable. And whereas the data included in the study for the recreational fisheries is vastly important, I mean, is vastly incomplete, and only accounts for approximately 2% of the fishery take. Now therefore being resolved, the Dare County Board of Commissioners expresses strong opposition to Stripe Mullet Fishery Management Plan Draft Amendment Two, which has been proposed by the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission, and recommends that this amendment be placed under further review due to outdated and unreliable data this the fifth day of February 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that, because they have never seen a species they didn't want to regulate.
All right. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, and it's been seconded by the vice chairman. The floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item 10 on the agenda is a request to permanently close an unimproved portion of Washington Street in Manio. This is before you, at the request of the adjoiners, and I'll bring Noah up to explain what that is and answer any questions that you might have.
The adjoiners to the unimproved section of Washington Street here on Roanoke Island have requested, through a general statute, to close that portion of Washington Street that was never improved. There's never been any pavement or utilities installed down that section of the street. So in doing so, y'all must adopt a resolution scheduling a public hearing at the next available commissioner's meeting, which would be in March. So that's what, this is a request for scheduling of a public hearing.
All right. We have a motion to set a public hearing at 9:00 AM on March 4, 2024. Motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You need to add the resolution approval to that.
Okay.
Correct.
Make her the motion.
Yes, the resolution. Adopt your resolution.
Make her the motion, add the resolution.
Yes, sir.
Second, approve.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have just a quick, Mr. Chairman. Noah, what happens, say the moon and the stars line up, and they shut off that Washington Street, what does it mean the neighbors have a glorified yard going forward?
Yes, they would split, so I believe it's a 60-foot right-of-way there that was never improved, they would split that at 30, 30. So the one adjoiner whose affidavit's in your packet would get 50% of it, the other adjoiner would get 50%.
By statute, title would pass half to one adjoiner, half to the other adjoiner.
So they could fence it if they wanted to.
It'd be their land. If they just get another 30 feet-
It backs up the Manio middle.
It's the same mechanism we did a year ago when the residents on Seagull Street and Road Anthony requested to close that road. It's the same process.
That was a success story. That was a good move by this board, Seagull Street. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Is there any compensation for acquiring that land?
No.
That is, by statute, if the road is abandoned, then the adjoiners take title to the abandoned property.
Okay.
Any further questions? Hearing none, then what's the, hearing none, then those in favor of the setting the public hearing for 9:00 AM on March 4, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item 11 is the Dare County Schools Early College. As you all know, for, I don't know, nearly two years, we've been talking about trying to accomplish an early college, and maybe it goes back further than that, doesn't it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It goes back further than that, yes.
We took the old COA off of the table for county use to reserve it for that purpose. Over time, there's been some change at the school board, and we've worked through all those details and are at a point where we have to make some decisions about what we want to do. What we did is, through those two years, we have been in that building multiple times with school board officials, and with some of you all, and we've walked the halls and we've done it, and we've tried to figure out, from our perspective, what would it take to use the school, use the old COA campus for that early college school? Our initial thoughts were that they've labeled on buildings A and B, A is the westernmost, the one closest to us, and B is the one on the back, which is the newer building in the back. And the thought was that Building B could be used in its current condition, paint it, clean it, spruce it up a little bit, and we could start early college in that, and then down the road, we would renovate Building A to make a college. And that was our plan going forward. And to push that plan forward, we put, sent the architects in there to look at the facility to be that. And what we found was a very, very, very old facility that the costs associated with bringing it up to speed were way more than what either we or the school board anticipated. To simply get the Building B, the newer piece, to the east, up for the initial start was going to cost roughly $2.6 million to bring that up to current codes, current conditions, and those kind of things. The older building really wasn't capable of being brought up to current code, and the architects recommended a rebuild. The total cost to renovate and to rebuild would have been around $17 million. When we looked further, we found that the cost to build a brand-new building was $21 million. So we could save $4 million and have a 60-year-old building that we've spruced up, but we would always have a 60-year-old building, or we could spend an extra $4 million and have a brand-new facility. We had some discussions with the school board, met with them, met with theirs, our CIP met, and the CIP decided that it would be better to build a new building. The good news about this is, one, we have a site, we can build it over at the new COA campus, and we can build a new building that matches the things that we do there. The second thing is, we have a funding source for it that doesn't come out of our local tax dollars, out of our general fund. There are lottery proceeds and some restricted sales tax proceeds that are set aside by the state every year for every county that are available for the sole purpose of school construction. And ours are accumulated, because we haven't had to do any school instruction and construction in a long time. And in talking with the school board and their long-term capital plan, there doesn't seem to be a need on the horizon in the near future to add on to schools. Those funds can't be used for anything else. So I know there's been some email traffic about an aquatic center, or can we just give the teachers a raise, or can we do something else with that money?
No.
We cannot. It can only be used for bricks and mortar for school. That's the only purpose. And if we don't use it, it simply accumulates with the state until one day, whenever we decide to use it, we use it. And so there's a source of funding that we could use to build the school. And we also talked with the school board and said, okay, if we use what we've programmed, the architect said 21 million, we ran, Dave ran the models at 25 million, simply to give us a cushion, because as we found-
Yep.
-our numbers changed.
No, they don't, Bobby. Stop it, just stop it.
These guys are professionals.
And so running that on a $25 million project, there's sufficient funding there to do that. And even if we needed to add wings on schools, if we had a growth spurt where we needed to add on to Manio Elementary, or one of the Hatteras Schools, or First Flight, there's sufficient money in the fund to allow us to do that as well. Did you put that in the agenda pack? So you've got the model in the agenda pack.
Yeah, it's in here, yeah.
And it shows you that. But the long and the short of that model is, is that there's sufficient funding, one, not only to spend $25 million on a new school, but again, to have money available in the future should we need to do something with our existing schools as well. There has been some discussion, and I think when we met with the school board, the question was asked, you know, why are we doing this? And I'm going to let Superintendent Bassman like come up and tell us in just a second, but one of the things that was interesting, I think we were one of 14 or one of 17-
Seventeen.
-17 school systems in the whole state that don't have an early college, and I'll let him speak to the benefits of the early college.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. Benefits of the early college. I've long believed that it's been one of the drawbacks in Dare County, that we didn't have the opportunity that so many other students in North Carolina have to attend an early college in Dare County. Like Bobby just said, that one of 17 districts, districts, of the 115 districts in North Carolina that do not have at least one early college. And so what is an early college? Heard some comparisons between early college and the career and college promise, where kids can dual-enroll at Manio, First Flight, and Cape Hatters High Schools and take college classes, so what's the difference? The difference is the demographic that makes up the early college and the reason they're there. The demographic is very simple. If you are a member of a family, and you would be the first-time college-goer in your family, that's the kid that's going to apply to early college. If you are a minority student, if you are an ESL student, if you are at risk of not graduating from high school, or if you want an accelerated track to get through high school, those are the very students that look to go to early college. And to give you some of the numbers, we do have the ability for our students in Dare County to take college classes while in high school, dual-enrolled, college and career promise. Here's the numbers from last year. Cape Hatters Secondary School had six students that graduated last year with an associate's degree. That's fantastic. Manio High School had zero. First Flight High School had one. Now, that's not a knock, because it takes a lot of time as a regular, traditional high school student to get an associate's degree. Typically, it's going to involve taking classes over the summer for at least two years, if not three. So it's a lot more work in a traditional setting to be able to get that associate's degree. What we're talking about in the early college is anywhere, depending on the class size in each individual class, we're talking about 35 to 50 kids a year getting associate's degrees, free of charge. It doesn't cost a dime for them to attend college, they don't pay for their books, and we're going to have, provide transportation to go back and forth if they choose to. That's the benefit. It's who it's targeting, and why they're there, and what we're able to provide them in the completion of that associate's degree. And that's what makes it different from a traditional dual-enrolled high school.
Speak to the vocational part of that.
Thank you very much. One of the huge things that keeps coming back is, well, you want everybody to go to four-year school. That's absolutely not true. An early college not only provides kids an opportunity to get an associate's degree, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and where that can benefit them in a second, but it also provides them an opportunity to get a career certification, for example, light welding. Those kids can graduate from high school as a certified welder, and then go into business competing with adults who have worked to get their certification in welding. We're also working with COA on building a pipeline for teachers, where we do some teacher prep programs, so the kids that go through COA can go to a four-year traditional school and get their teaching degree and come back. The plumbing, heating and air, all those occupations that we desperately need in Dare County right now, where we need employees, we have kids that can graduate from high school and go directly into those fields because of the training that they're able to get. Now, I said I'd come back. If you choose to go in the military, if you have an associate's degree coming out of high school and enlist in the military, you go in as a higher pay grade than anyone else that enlists in the military. So not only will it benefit kids that are interested in going in a four-year school, but it will also greatly benefit kids that want to pursue a job or career immediately or choose to go into the military. It's a win-win-win all the way down the road.
And I think your words were, it's one more tool in your educational toolbox.
One more option. That's exactly right. We're striving to give our kids options to move forward, and this is an option we don't have the ability to offer them right now.
I'll add something.
Go ahead, Dan.
Actually, a couple of things to that. What you're speaking to is consistent with what we've been trying to do overall with COA, is consistent with what we've been trying to do with the Dare Guarantee Scholarship. So it's a piece of the puzzle that can help complete it quickly. Second thing is that also speaks to what you're saying there, talking about the trades, the plumbing, the electrical, the heating and air guys. I mean, our economy is screaming right now. And yes, a lot of it's hospitality, but at the same time, you know, it's all these blue-collar type trades that make these houses go. And when you look, one of the things that Noah and his department fight with, I mean, you've got to have code enforcement officials, you've got to have building inspectors, you've got to have guys that have a background in plumbing and electrical that can check off and make sure that the construction process goes smoothly. And this is consistent with that as well. So I'm on board.
What we've typically, excuse me, what we've typically seen in the past as well, in our experience, is when you increase the enrollment in early college, then obviously everybody's not going to get into early college. But what we've seen time and time again is, you increase the number of kids that are taking early college classes, and, you know, Johnny's mom sees Mary taking early college because she's in the early college, well, she wants Johnny to take college classes. Well, that plays right into the Dare Guarantee. Because even though they're not enrolled in the early college, if they want to pursue that dual enrollment and then complete that degree, you've already afforded them that highway. So we see those numbers typically go up when the early college numbers go up.
Steve, what would you anticipate, what would you anticipate those numbers going to over the next, say, three to five years?
We are limited by the state at the early college. You can only have 100 students per class maximum. And in an early college, students are allowed to stay for a fifth year without penalty. So if they're not completed, they haven't completed their associates or whatever degree they're working on in four years, they can choose to stay there, and it doesn't hurt the graduation rate or anything like that. So typically, what you do is you take that fifth year and give a little wiggle room. So instead of a full 100 students, you go shoot down the middle of the road, 50 kids for their fifth year. So we're looking at about 350 kids total when we get it fully populated.
Wow, wow. That was my question. You've answered it.
Yep.
Oh, I do have one corollary. How do we select those, Steve?
Okay, the demographic that I mentioned earlier, kids apply, it's an application process.
Yes.
And the demographic is applied to the application. Now, I will say this, and this flies into face with what a lot of people believe, grades are not part of the application. You don't come in there and say, my kid's an A student, therefore they go to early college. That's not how it works. You look at those demographic points, and the kids get points for their demographics. And there's a score sheet, and then you total those points, and you go down the list and you offer kids. Some of them choose to accept the offer, some choose to turn it down. One of the things we are going to try to do is allow students to participate in athletics. If they go to the early college, they'll be able to go back to their sending school, whether that's Manio, First Flight, or Cape Hatters, and participate in athletics as well.
Does all of that make sense to you, Steve?
Yes, sir, it does.
So I'm a struggling student, but my demographic works, so I can do early college.
That's exactly right.
Even though I was struggling, everybody's nodding their head. Ron's nodding his head.
I hear-
Why do I not see that student failing miserably and going home saying, this is a disaster, Mom, I can't do this?
Because typically, that student in a traditional high school setting is going to be the student that flies under the radar. In the early college setting, that student's going to receive support and the resources that they need to be successful in the early college. It's a different climate and a different culture in that building, and it's very supportive of students that struggle. And I'll even say this, what I have seen in my own experience is, I've seen kids graduate with associate's degrees that probably would have never taken an AP class in a traditional school, because no one would have recommended for that kid to take the AP class.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I can attest to that. Yeah, I can attest to that as being an instructor myself for several years in emergency services. Everybody learns differently. And some people, like in a high school setting, just don't learn that way, but they learn better in a college setting than they would in a traditional high school setting. And I've seen that many, many times.
And then I guess the last thing that I have to talk about. I'm sorry.
I have some questions, if you don't mind. I think it's great.
Thank you.
This started several years ago. I remember touring when I was on the Board of Ed, looking into this, and I think it's great it's coming to fruition, hopefully. But I have a question. Will the classes be in person, all of the classes in person, or do you expect some virtual?
Well, we sort of live in a place now where virtual is...
That's where I'm going. What arrangements have been made for Hatteras students?
So what we're going to do, we're gonna bring them up here.
Okay.
The goal is to have everybody face-to-face. And I'll sort of expand the conversation. Our relationship with College of the Album Hall is phenomenal, and we're strengthening it every day. One of the points that we're really pushing right now is we've got kids at Manio High School and First Flight High School who are taking COA classes virtually.
Right.
They're 15 minutes from a college campus, and they're taking a class online. And to me, that doesn't make sense because there's value in that face-to-face interaction on the college campus. So we're going to encourage those students and reduce those virtual numbers. Now, having said all that, is virtual learning still a resource or something that we can, you know, apply where we need to? Absolutely. But that should be done fewer as opposed to traditional.
I totally agree, and I think if you survey students, they prefer the face-to-face in most cases. But I just was wondering about Hatteras and the transportation.
We've already sat down with our transportation department and talked about how we're gonna run that bus.
And the same for First Flight because it's a trip over here, too.
And kids, when they get their driver's license?
Yeah.
They're gonna drive. I mean, that's what happens. I mean, you offer them the transportation, but you know, they want that freedom, too.
Yeah. And you mentioned sports. What about any other extracurricular activities, clubs and things of that nature? Will they be allowed to participate?
We haven't gotten into the weeds of which clubs may or may not. I know what we've done in the past for marching band, we allowed the marching band students to go back and march. That becomes complicated because a lot of those clubs are curriculum-based clubs. So like band class may be second period at the traditional school. But practice is after school. Well, a student that's taking early college is in college class that morning, so they're not in the band class, so they show up at 3 o'clock, and now, you know, the kids in the band class have already been over, whatever they're playing that day. So those things become a little complicated. So we're gonna have to work through that.
Yeah. And one other thing, we have the money, according to what Dave and Bobby have told us, but how do you expect it to impact your regular operating budget?
Or doesn't?
Once it's established? I mean, well, you have to have teachers, you have to have...
Oh, sure, but the state also provides that.
The state will do that.
It literally becomes another school. We'll get teachers and a principal, and actually, there's some small amount of funding that comes from the state if the legislature approves that for early colleges. We did have a report to the State Board last week. That was well-accepted, so we're still moving forward. But no, it literally becomes a separate school.
Well, it will, yes, and it will just go into our total enrollment.
Yes, ma'am.
And divide the teachers that way.
Yes, ma'am.
There will be some cost to us.
There will be some cost.
Because we've got another building that's gotta maintain that budget and all those kind of operational things. So it's not without cost.
Yeah, that's what I was going for. I didn't think it was, but okay, great, thank you.
A couple of things that we didn't talk about. One is we have talked with COA, and they're enthusiastic as well, and the school boards talk with them as well. So this isn't being done in a vacuum. And I've talked with the town of Manio as well to let them know what we're doing and to include them on our planning and those sort of things, and they're excited about that as well. What we would expect right now is we would expect that in the fall of 2025, correct?
Right.
The first class, because the first class is only one year. You have 50 kids or less in that class. We can put them at the old COA. We think if you all approve this today, that we can have the new facility up and running by the fall of 2026 so that by the time we got the second class available, Class 1 and Class 2 could then move to the new campus, and that would allow them to get started, get their permitting done, all the things they've gotta do in the meantime.
And you start with ninth grade, and then the next year, they move up to 10th grade, you bring another ninth grade in class in. And because they need to move up through the system and learn the things they need to learn to be successful. So it's not like you populate the entire school all in one year.
Will we need to do any renovations at Building A before we bring in this freshman class?
Paint and clean.
And we're also talking with COA about the potential, if they had any available classrooms that we could use on their campuses as well. So that's...
Yeah, I guess the last thing I didn't mention is, once we get the campus built, we would share core facilities with the main structure that's already there because it would become a part of the college campus. And things that we can do together, we would do together on that. And speaking of COA, and I think the Chairman can probably speak to this better than I can, but having the school there on the campus is a big benefit to the FTEs, right?
That's correct.
At the school that helps with funding and helps make College of the Album Hall more successful as well. So it's a win for our students.
A win.
It's a win for the schools, it's a win for COA.
A win for everybody.
So it's a good program, and it's one of the few times where something that's good comes together at the same time that you have a funding source that funds it that doesn't have to come out of local tax dollars. So it's a good thing.
Steve, so first, excuse me, so the first year, you're anticipating for next year, fall 2024?
Yes, sir.
You're anticipating, how many students?
About 50 students. And we traditionally would do about 75, but because we're gonna be sort of limited in space, we thought we'd keep that number down that first year.
And how many teachers?
The state hasn't allocated those yet, but we're looking at probably starting around four to six.
And we have those now?
Yes, sir.
Or they would be additional?
Yes, sir, no, we have those now.
Got you, okay.
So are we looking for a motion to move forward?
Yes.
With this problem?
Yes.
I will make that motion.
All right, there's, well, yeah, floor open for discussion in a minute. There's a motion on the floor then from Commissioner House to move forward with the proposal for the early college project.
I'll second.
Okay. Me as well.
And the second is from Commissioner Bassnight and Ross. And the floor is open for further discussion. I'd like, I wanna validate that the state is, with respects to COA and FTEs, the state has kind of threatened COA for the last three or four years about pulling its funding because the FTEs were not where they needed to be. This will be a tremendous, this will put us over the top.
That's great.
With respect to that, and we'll put that issue to bed, you know, with respect to COA. So this, as the county manager said, this is extremely good for COA, extremely good for Dare County and this campus. And as I envisioned four or five years ago when I started working on this, this was our goal and objective, is to make this campus in Manio everything that we can possibly make it. And we're doing that, and it's very encouraging, and I commend you, my fellow commissioners, for being on board and us taking these necessary steps to bring this to fruition. So any further comments?
Just the fact that we've exhausted, I mean, we have whipped Russell Twyford Campus over there to death, and it's time to move forward.
Absolutely. So, all right, well, no further comments. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
I got a call yesterday, and this is very encouraging, too. We're gonna be moving forward in First Flight. Most of you are aware, we've got a situation over there with respects to equipment for cooking, and I mean, it's top of the line. And we're gonna, Tim Sweeney, Dean Sweeney's working on a, he's worked out something with the superintendent that we'll be able to offer. One of the objectives, if you recall several years back when I had the task force for curriculum, one of the curriculums was the culinary. We will be moving forward, COA, Tim Sweeney will be moving forward using their facilities for culinary programs. So that was encouraging to hear that yesterday. I hope I didn't let the cat out of the bag, Steve.
He did.
Quite all right.
He did.
Urbans is...
Thanks, Bob.
I'm ready. Yeah, so I knew you'd like to hear that, Commissioner Bateman. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Chairman, since you all now...
Thank you, Board of Education.
Yes, thank you.
Y'all now moving forward, our next step would be to get an RFQ together to get an architect involved to start the programming process.
Do you need a motion to do that?
I need a motion to authorize us to send out that RFQ.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by the Vice Chairman, seconded by Commissioner House. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you all.
David, Ron, thank you all for being here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It seems that the last piece of the puzzle or the vision for COA campus would be those two pickleball courts, and we would have achieved the entire, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
And y'all are wearing me. Jiminy Crisp.
I am, I can't help myself.
We're gonna take a five-minute break real quick.
Break this thing. It's like pouring salt on a roof.
What's that? Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. It seems that the last piece of the puzzle or the vision for COA campus would be those two pickleball courts and we would have achieved the entire, oh, I'm sorry, sir. And y'all are wearing me. Jiminy Crisp.
You're on the road today.
I am, I can't help myself.
We're gonna take a five-minute break real quick. Thank you, School Board.
Thank you all.
David, Ron, thank you all for being here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It seems that the last piece of the puzzle or the vision for COA campus would be those two pickleball courts and we would have achieved the entire, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
And y'all are wearing me. Jiminy Crisp.
You're on the road today.
I am, I can't help myself.
We're gonna take a five-minute break real quick. Thank you, School Board. David, Ron, thank you all for being here. Our next step would be to get an RFQ together to get an architect involved to start the programming process. Do you need a motion to do that?
I need a motion to authorize us to send out that RFQ.
So moved. Okay, it's been moved by the Vice Chairman, seconded by Commissioner House. Further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor with that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item thirteen on the agenda is entitled "Man's Harbor Traffic Safety." For a number of years, the folks in Man's Harbor have been trying to work with DOT to sort of dampen the speed there as you come off the bridge and go into Man's Harbor. And so they've made some previous efforts, some successful, some less successful, I guess. And they've come to us, again, to try to help them accomplish some of their goals, again, to make it safer.
Is that that half-mile strip right in front of White's?
Where it goes from sixty-five to, or sixty to forty-five.
Goes to forty.
Like that.
Goes to forty. Now they're proposing thirty-five, I think.
Well, they're proposing that and they're proposing some warning lights and some other things to try to get that traffic slowed down for all activities going through that light or into the White's store and all that. Robin Mann is here on behalf of the Man's Harbor Civic Association to talk to you a little bit about that and to tell you what the problem is and then to tell you what they would like you to help them with, with the solutions. And I'll turn it over to you, Robin.
Good morning, Robin.
Thank you.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today on behalf of the Man's Harbor Civic Association. And I have other Executive Board members here with me and concerned citizens of Man's Harbor also. So hopefully, if I don't have all the answers to your questions, they'll be able to join in and we'll have a great productive conversation about this. Thank you for getting us on your agenda. You have in your package a letter that we sent to you in January. In addition, we sent a letter to DOT in November and copied each of you, expressing concerns over the growing amount of speeding traffic through the busy intersection in Man's Harbor. The safety of all traveling citizens in and out of Dare County through this intersection, along with our working community, is of great concern. The current speed limit through the commercial area and intersection of Man's Harbor is forty miles per hour. I am sure that you will agree with me that there are very few motorists that adhere to that speed limit. Sinage alerting motorists to reduce their speed should be accompanied by a blinking light and should be alerted sooner as they approach our community than the current signage. Conversations with DOT have resulted with the recent placement of the message board alerting motorists of their speed and to slow down. I don't know if any of y'all have been through there lately and have seen that, but we're getting positive feedback from our community that it definitely is slowing down traffic there a little bit. They're starting to be conscientious as they go through there and see what their speed truly is. All of you know the National Park Service and the Tourism Board, they're telling us that our visitor numbers have increased over the last five years to record-breaking numbers. And all those traveling visitors are not coming from the Wright Brothers Memorial Bridge, they are coming also through that area. They have, they travel at fifty to sixty miles per hour in anticipation to the arrival to the number-one tourist destination. The traveling public through that mix of commercial and residential area, as you're turning to go into the residential or into White's or any of that area, the speeding motorist, they were so afraid we're gonna get hit in the rear because they will swerve around us, they're impatient. We want them to slow down and enjoy the area that they are going through. We would like to express our appreciation to Sheriff Doug Doughty and his deputies for monitoring this area as much as possible and to our State Highway Patrol officers. However, I and others have witnessed motorists that should be ticketed when no one is around to do so. They can't be there twenty-four-seven, we are aware of that. Folks who live nearby will tell you they hear the speeding vehicles day and night through there. We are asking for your support on the following to be taken from DOT. The existing signage on the westbound railing of the bridge is too close to the intersection, which does not give the traveling motorists time to adequately reduce their speed and in addition, install a flashing light on the signage reading "Lower Speed Limit Ahead." In addition to the message board recently placed at the end of the bridge for the westbound traffic, install the same for the eastbound traffic approaching the community indicating slower speed ahead, with the board showing the motorist's speed and reminders of the slower speed limit. From that side, they're going fifty-five. From the bridge side, they're going sixty-five, sixty-eight to seventy and sometimes even more. More frequent trimming of the trees and the shrubs on either side of the four-lane, especially near the west end of the bridge, which can restrict or hamper visibility. Lower the speed limit through the commercially-zoned four-lane intersection from forty to thirty-five. There are businesses and residents there, residential homes there, that are turning and they need to have slower traffic behind them as they're turning. A step-down speed limit into the community similar to Columbia is also recommended and would be appreciated. I just want to thank you for your time with this matter and hopefully you will support us.
Robin, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'm not sure how often you go to the Virginia side via one-sixty-fifty-eight, but if you recall, on the, on the Currytuck side, that speed limit was fifty-five.
Yes.
All the way past the Point Golf Course. The state went in there and lowered that speed limit and I've seen multiple pullovers by the state troopers. So I feel, I feel like it's working a lot better than it was. So hopefully, if we can get some of these issues done, and I'm sure my fellow board members would agree, we'll reach out to NC DOT and see if we can't get these matters implemented and hopefully, and we, going to Raleigh-Greenville all the time, I see it. I mean, you, people come off of that bridge, it's a sixty-mile-hour speed limit on that bridge.
Oh, yes.
They keep on rocking and rolling when they get to the other side and keep on going.
I had a recent conversation with Sheriff Doughty and he said you'd be amazed how many tickets they write for over seventy.
Wow.
Yes.
Wow. I believe the Vice Chairman had a question of you?
In support of what Robin was saying, I had occasion to be coming from the west side on last Thursday and last Friday and made a point of slowing to forty by the time I hit forty-mile-hour sign. And I agree with you, a step-down to thirty-five would be advisable, I think.
Yes.
But I slowed and stayed right on, set my speed limit on forty and they were coming by me like a cool breeze.
Let me challenge that for a second. Everything you've said, I agree with. Would thirty-five really be necessary if everybody stuck to forty? And I'm looking at Robin, because I've been through there at forty and it doesn't strike me, because I've experienced everything you've said, but as I go through at forty, I know it's forty, because I know I live here, it doesn't strike me as an unreasonable speed. I didn't feel like, oh, my God, I'm, you know, in a precarious rate of speed. In fact, it felt just fine at forty as I went by White's. Thirty-five, I'm pushing back on that. If I'm saying I can enforce forty and they'll stay there, wouldn't that solve most of this issue?
Well, with respect, Commissioner Ross, when you have a speed limit of forty, most people don't go forty.
Well, I didn't say let them go, I said strictly enforce forty.
Right. If you go thirty-five, they'll go forty. The only way that I see that you're gonna keep people at forty, put cameras there or ticket them. They're just not going forty. They're not, they're going fifty and sixty. By the time you realize that you're in a forty-mile zone, you can't, you're still going fifty-five and sixty. It's hard to slow down, the step-down process is really good.
If you set your cruise control at five over, you can pass a trooper and wave and he'll wave and you go on. They're not writing tickets at five or six over. And so there's a grace in what it's, if you're trying to get them to go forty, then you get them inside the grace, if you will.
There's, you're not talking about, I don't know, I'd say it's from where the forty-mile-hour sign is now to whether you, where you get back on the bridge, what's that, three-tenths of a mile? I mean, you're not talking about a great distance here.
It's too short.
Yeah, it's too short.
You're right. It's just too damn short.
You're not talking about a great distance to have to slow down towards.
Right.
That's right.
You know, I don't know if this is another option, but we'll certainly make it to our representative on the Transportation Board as well as staff to make these recommendations. But I just saw recently, and this is, they do this in multiple places in Tidewater, is they're testing another location now and giving them thirty days and it's a camera and they'll take your license plate and if you exceed the speed limit, and I forgot what the speed limit was, was a low speed limit, it was either thirty-five, forty-five. They're doing thirty days, they'll send you a warning. In the next thirty days, after that thirty days is over, if they take your picture, they're sending you, they're sending you a bill in the mail with a ticket to pay. I don't know if that's another option for us or not, but, and I don't know if Carolina would be willing to do that, but it's certainly another option. Mr. Chairman, but in the meantime, what I observed, I go over to Nature's Harmony all the time and, you know, I like those girls over there and we buy our plants for the restaurant. And so I'm coming out of there and someone who was going east whips by and going seventy miles an hour then and getting on, going to get on the bridge, that just isn't safe. I mean, you know, I think we need to do what they've asked, let them know as they turn the big turn, going before you get to Man's Red and White, that you need to slow your butt down. they need to have slower traffic behind them as they're turning. A step-down speed limit into the community similar to Columbia is also recommended and would be appreciated. I just want to thank you for your time with this matter and hopefully you will support us.
Robin, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'm not sure how, how often you go to the Virginia side via, via 1658, but if you recall on the, on the Currituck side, that speed limit was fifty-five.
Yes.
All the way past the Point Golf Course. The state went in there and lowered that speed limit and I've, I've seen multiple pullovers by the state troopers. So I feel, I feel like it's working a lot better than it was. So hopefully.
Yes.
If we can get some of these issues done and I'm, I'm sure my fellow board members would agree, we'll reach out to NC DOT and see if we can't get these matters implemented and, and hopefully. And we, going to Raleigh-Greenville all the time, I, I see it. I mean, you, people come off of that bridge, a sixty-mile-an-hour speed limit on that bridge.
Oh, yes.
Keep on rocking and rolling when they get to the other side and keep on going.
I had a recent conversation with Sheriff Doughty and he said you'd be amazed how many tickets they write for over seventy.
Wow.
Yes.
Well, I believe the vice chairman had a question of you?
In support of what Robin was saying, I had occasion to be coming from the west side on last Thursday and last Friday and made a point of slowing to forty by the, by the time I hit forty-mile-an-hour sign. And I agree with you, a step down to thirty-five would be advisable, I think.
Yes.
But I slowed and stayed right on, set my speed limit on forty and they were coming by me like a cool breeze.
Let me challenge that for a second. Everything you've said, I agree with. Would thirty-five really be necessary if everybody stuck to forty? And I'm looking at Robin. Because I've been through there at forty and it doesn't strike me, because I've, I've experienced everything you said, but as I go through at forty, I know it's forty because I know I live here. It doesn't strike me as an unreasonable speed. I didn't feel like, oh, my God, I'm, you know, in a precarious rate of speed. In fact, it felt just fine at forty as I went by White's. Thirty-five, I'm pushing back on that. If I'm saying I can enforce forty and they'll stay there, wouldn't that solve most of this issue?
Well, with respect, Commissioner Ross. When you have a speed limit of forty, most people don't go forty.
Well, I didn't say let them go. I said strictly enforce forty.
Right. If you go thirty-five, they'll go forty. The only way that I see that you're going to keep people at forty, put cameras there or ticket them. They're just not going forty. They're not, they're going fifty and sixty. By the time you realize that you're in a forty-mile zone, you can't, you're still going fifty-five and sixty. It's hard to slow down. The step-down process is really good.
Set your cruise control at five over. You can pass a trooper and wave and he'll wave and you go on. They're not writing tickets at five or six over. And so there's a grace in what it's, if you're trying to get them to go forty, then you get them inside the grace, if you will.
There's, there's, you're not talking about, I don't know, I'd say it's from, from where the forty-mile-an-hour sign is now to whether you, where you get back on the bridge, what's that, three-tenths of a mile? I mean, you're not talking about a great distance here.
It's too short.
Yeah, it's, it's too short.
You're right. It's just too damn short.
You're not, you're not talking about a great distance to have to slow down.
Right.
That's right.
You know, I, I don't know if this is another option, but we'll certainly make it to our representative on the Transportation Board as well as staff to, to make these recommendations. But I just saw recently, and this is, they do this in multiple places in Tidewater, is they're testing another location now and giving them thirty days and it's a camera and they'll take your license plate and, and if you exceed the speed limit, I forgot what the speed limit was, was a low speed limit, it's either thirty-five, forty-five. They're doing thirty days, they'll send you a warning. In the next thirty days, after that thirty days, if they take your picture, they're sending you a, they're sending you a bill in the mail with a ticket to pay. I, I don't know if that's another option for us or not, but, and I don't know if, if Carolina would be willing to do that, but it's certainly another option.
Mr. Chairman, but in the meantime, what I observed, I go over to Nature's Harmony all the time and, you know, I like those girls over there and we buy our plants for the restaurant. And so I'm coming out of there and someone who was going east whips by and going seventy miles an hour then and getting on, going to get on the bridge, that just isn't safe. I mean, you know, I think we need to do what they've asked, let them know as they turn the big turn, going before you get to Mann's Red and White, that you need to slow your butt down. And give them adequate notice with flashing lights and so forth. And also when they get ready to come off the bridge, let them know three, four hundred yards back, listen, it's going to be thirty-five miles an hour up here, slow down. Because sometimes, you know, everybody, you're, you're thinking you're somewhere else, whatever, you come out of that driveway and that intersection, that's dangerous.
Well, it is. I mean, you come off the bridge at sixty and, and the right-hand turn into Mann's Harbor, I mean, that's right on you and that's, that's a dangerous intersection.
I, I just want to back up what Ervin just said there. I mean, there's a lot of really good discussion going on with this, but they're not asking for a lot.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll back that up with the whole step-down idea, which I think is, again, something that's consistent, which you're seeing in other areas, and I think it would be an effective measure. I, I this, I'm ready to roll on this.
Do we know how many accidents have occurred in the last twenty-four months or so? Any statistic?
I'm sure that data's there, I don't know.
Can I have one comment, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
I started this, I'm Timmy Midget from Mann's Harbor, I live right across the street from White's. I started this fourteen years ago. My sister stepped off of White's parking lot and got killed. It was forty then. That's the issue that we're running into. There's so many kids, they pick up kids at White's right now with a school bus. They try to get them to take them by a car to make sure they're not going to have to cross the road to get picked up. We're not asking for a lot. I have a, my nephew has a little two-year-old boy that lives right across the street. I have two grandsons that live at the intersection. We need to slow them down. Thank you, Timmy.
Yeah, no, no argument.
No argument. Let me, let me, let me throw something else out there, and then, speed bump. That's all I'm gonna say.
I'll tell you, I tried that some number of years ago and DOT told them, no, and I think there was a noise issue or something as well.
That was the first thing I asked for fourteen years ago. And they said, and they told us again, noise.
They go over those humps, they make a, a rather thudding noise and.
And that's harm in what?
I'm sorry?
And that, what harm is that doing?
Well, the residents that live, you know, in the mix.
Okay.
DOT has told us not, not to ask for rumble strips anymore.
Not ask for rumble strips and not ask for a stoplight.
And we're not asking for.
Well, that's North Carolina for you because you find them in Virginia all over.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, we may have to get there one day, but we're asking at this point for these things. And also, that forty-mile-an-hour slow-ahead sign, if it had something flashing on it, it might stick out better. But the Virginia Dare Bridge is a two-lane, one-way bridge. And if you're in the left-hand lane and there's a large vehicle to your right, you're going to go past that forty-mile-an-hour speed limit sign in a second.
Right.
And you'll never see it.
Right.
You can't see it at night either.
Oh.
I'm, I'm, I'm in full agreeance with everything you have here. I'm curious as to why DOT told you not, not a stoplight there. We've asked it several times and they just flat-out say it doesn't warrant a stoplight at this time.
Not enough traffic, maybe?
We just had this conversation for six months.
Not enough cross-traffic problems?
I know, I know.
Is that what they do again?
No, they just count the traffic and that's how they determine stoplights?
Yeah.
But there's other, other areas where you have a stoplight that has even less traffic than this intersection.
We will, we will take these issues, I will ask to meet with our transportation representative as soon as we can meet and put these before him and ask, tell him, ask him that we need his support in, in implementing these.
Could I just say? I just want to say one thing. In the meantime, when I'm traveling and I see a sheriff's car or a cop car parked on the side of the road, everybody slows down. Maybe that's something we could just have it parked over there.
It doesn't even have to be man, just a car.
Doesn't even have to be man.
Yeah, I always wondered if they had a spare, they could just leave park that.
Everybody slows down. I mean, really. In the meantime, until we can get all these other things implemented.
We'll take a broken down when it's broken down and need running and take over there.
It'll still work, broke down, like you said, without anybody in it.
I mean, it just is an immediate reaction. So that's something in the meantime, we could do. I support everything that you're proposing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will say that in my, our conversations with Sheriff Doughty, he is so supportive of all of this and he will do whatever we can to slow traffic down.
Gotcha.
He is very supportive.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, hopefully we can have some successes with DOT.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item fourteen on the agenda. This is a lease agreement with the county of Dare and the town of Kitty Hawk. As you know, in our construction plan, we're going to build an EMS station. I have in my office the deed from Kitty Hawk for the property there on the bypass in Kitty Hawk for the new EMS station. This lease that's before you is our lease that would lease back the bay that they're going to get for, in return for having given us the property. We're giving them a bay that they can put a fire truck in, in that facility. The lease is a standard lease, it's forty years, forty years was the term they requested. That was fine as far as we're concerned. There's provisions in it that allow us to do the financing that, that say they're, it's an automatic subordination to the deeds of trust and things we've got to do to finance the construction of the property. And, you know, we do all the maintenance, it's our facility. The only thing is they get to park a truck there. So pretty standard lease and it needs your approval for us to move forward.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House, been seconded by Commissioner Couch and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item fifteen is your consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of amendments to tax collectors' report, a revision of the Board of Commissioners list of two thousand twenty-four meeting dates. I will comment on that. That's changing the meeting date from Monday, May sixth until Tuesday, May seventh. So for you all and your calendars and for anybody who's listening, that would be a change.
Very good, very good.
Monday, May sixth to Tuesday, May seventh for that meeting in May. We have the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four Transportation Department Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy, and the Stumpy Point Volunteer Fire Department Firefighter Relief Board Appointment. We have amendment to the Capital Project Ordinance and Budget Amendment for the Capital Investment Fund for the Manio and Frisco EMS Stations. We have NC nine-one-one Board Portable Radio PSAP Grant, Health and Human Services Division, Social Services, the Young Williams Contract Amendment, and Health and Human Services, Public Health Division, Bridge Access Program Funding for COVID-nineteen Vaccines.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Motion has been made to approve the consent agenda as presented by Commissioner Couch. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those opposed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous. Pardon?
You said opposed, you meant in favor, sorry. Yes, we're in favor.
Yeah, you just misunderstood me.
I did. I'm going to clarify my auditory receptacle.
Item sixteen are your board appointments. Your first board appointment is the Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board. The town of Kitty Hawk recommends Councilman Dylan Tillot to replace outgoing Councilwoman Lynn McLean.
Move to approve, Mr. Tillot, please.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your Veterans Advisory Council. Marshal Brown resigned effective December thirty-first. The council recommends Lisa Lloyd be appointed to fulfill the unexpired term.
Move to approve Lisa Lloyd.
Motion on the floor to approve Lisa Lloyd by the vice chair, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
The Older Adult Services Board, due to the passing of Commissioner Tobin, the board needs to appoint a commissioner to fill the unexpired term and this was postponed from your January meeting.
Move to appoint Bee Bassnight.
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Plating Board. The terms of Chairman John Finelli and David Hines have expired. David Hines wishes to be reappointed. Chairman John Finelli no longer wishes to be appointed, so an individual will need to be appointed to fill the at-large seat and then a member will need to be appointed as the chairman.
Move that we appoint John DeBoye as chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair and Commissioner House. Those in favor of the motion, any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Move to add Eddie Twine.
What, are you going to reappoint?
We need to reappoint.
Oh, sorry.
Reappoint.
David Hines.
Reappoint David Hines, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous. Now we need, now we need to appoint.
We just want to appoint Eddie Twine to that at-large seat.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor about a vice chair to appoint Mr. Twine. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That brings you to the Albomoral Commission. Commissioner Ross has given up his seat on the Albomoral Commission and you would need to appoint someone to fill that seat.
Reluctantly, I have agreed to go back on that board. So somebody needs to make a motion?
Make the motion.
I'm not going to motion myself.
Bob, why don't you make a motion if the chairperson places me on that board?
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman, House and the whole God-blessed board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Yeah, that was unanimous, though, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was. It was unanimous nomination.
In March, you have an Older Adult Services Advisory Council with one term expiring. In April, you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with one term expiring. And you also have the Mann's Harbor Marina Commission with two terms expiring. And then in May, you have the Veterans Advisory Council with two terms expiring and the Zoning Board of Adjustments with one term expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, County Manager. Brings us to item sixteen, board, I mean, item seventeen, Commissioner's Business. I would like to ask Commissioner Couch if he would kick that off today.
Thank you, I'd be glad to. Was pleasantly surprised to hear that a project can be done there in Rodanthe. I think it's a natural step. Forty million sounds like a lot of money and it is a lot of money. But at the same time, I'm coming up through that area this morning, they've already got overwash on the road up there. You know, it's a safety hazard. Also, we're needing to sustain the economy coming down there and I just think this is something that I'm going to be watching. There's a lot of heated discussion going on right now with how to deal with floodwater resiliency and, but this is another element here to help continue that conversation and that's the way the democratic process is supposed to work. Let's see how it all shakes out. Also being in Rodanthe this week, the first of the houses that we, when we approved the closing of Seagull Street there and just as, excuse me, County Manager Attorney said that that reverts to the homeowners, the first of several houses planned to be moved and there have been moved. It was a fascinating process to watch. If you remember back when they moved into Cape Hatters Lighthouse, they were using regular soap, ivory dishwashing liquid and stuff and it's that same principle that's going on with these mega houses there. But it's showing that, that we're finding solutions, whether it's beach nurishment, whether it's relocation. There are federal, state, and local agencies working together and it was a fascinating thing to see. There was an international film crew down there filming that. You had regular regional television people there, you've got tourists coming by, you know, they're out here on vacation, they're fishing, you know, they're checking things out in the wintertime, so that's a natural thing that brings people over there to see what in the gravy's going on moving this big honking six-bedroom house back, you know, several, several yards, several more yards to try and buy some time. These houses rent like gangbusters. That doesn't change the fact that they are in jeopardy from some of the effects that we've got with the weather. But people, they line up, they line up to stay in those houses. So it's been a real interesting week down on the island. Just a couple of things to mention. With, we lost Sharon Peel Kennedy. I know a couple of, particularly Steve and others, we're probably going to bring that up. I went first, so I got my digs in. She was really, really, I mean, she, she's pretty much the driving force behind NC Ked. She put a microphone in front of her and she's going to fill it up really quick and we're going to miss her. Also was very happy and is bittersweet losing former Chairman Owens, but that was a very powerful service we went to. And I just got to tell you, you know, I knew there was going to be a reception there at Lone Cedar and I had that on my mind for quite a while. But when Stephen Weskett, the coastal pastor there, said that finally Chairman Owens, Chairman Owens, after all those years, finally volunteered to him what his greatest achievement was, he was said it was restoring his relationship with his kids and his grandchildren. So I went right on by Bassnight's and headed home and passed it up with a couple of my kids. I was hoping y'all'd save me some shrimp and nobody brought anything, so.
Sorry, Dan.
I'll get over it.
They didn't have any shrimp.
They didn't have any shrimp.
They didn't have shrimp.
All right, well, okay.
Next time.
That's what I've got. Thank you all, just appreciate the attentiveness of the board on these, it's a complicated agenda today and a lot of good work got done.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch, appreciate it. Ms. Bassnight?
Yes, sir. Well, first of all, I want to congratulate our Employee of the Month, Eileen, and our Employee of the Year, Dustin. It's great to have wonderful people working for our people in Dare County, so we thank you. I also want to congratulate you, Mr. Quarterback, Chairman Woodard, for putting together that State of the County Breakfast. It was wonderful. I've had so many people comment about how much they learned about the county and all that the county does. I even had Doc Sawyer stop me in the road. I was behind him, he stopped his truck, got out of the truck, came back, he's like, I'm going to rob you. And I went, okay. But he wanted to tell me how, how much he enjoyed it. He had never been to one before, but he said, he said, it's just amazing what the county's doing. So it's made a great impression on a lot of people, I think. I also want to say that, and several of us attended the Martin Luther King Celebration and like Rob said at the last meeting, if you've not heard, that Elizabeth City State Choir sang, "You have really missed something." They were fabulous. And I'll just reiterate that I'm happy, I know that about six years ago, we toured those, the buildings at CLA and talked about an early college and I'm so happy that we are moving forward with that. It's going to make a big difference for all of our kids. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just a few things to go through. This Friday, on the ninth, the Dare Education Foundation is holding a annual fundraiser event called Dueling Pianos at one oh eight Budley at six PM. It is for a very worthwhile cause, our teachers. And again, I'm putting in a plug for the Dare Education Foundation fundraiser on Friday. On Thursday, I will be meeting with a new group that I've joined, kind of unofficially. The Friends of Jockeys Ridge are preparing for the, if you can believe it, fiftieth anniversary celebration of Jockeys Ridge State Park being a state park. And that will be next year. In nineteen seventy-three, a young lady named Carolise de Baum stood in front of the bulldozers and said, no, you're not going to do it. And her family and others have joined over the years and have promoted, supported Jockeys Ridge. And so their fiftieth celebration is coming up in the summer of twenty-five and I am on that planning committee, kind of an unofficial participation, but I will be working with them to help with that planning for the celebration next summer, a year from now. On March the ninth, there will be a polar plunge by many, many participants in the county. And that's to benefit Special Olympics, it's coordinated through the Virginia Tillot Center. And a young lady who spoke to us earlier from the Older Adult Services Board, Mary Pendle, And a young lady who spoke to us earlier from the older adult services board, Mary Pendle, and I both sit on that Tillot Center board. Neither one of us will be here on the ninth. But here's the good news. She and I are gonna do the plunge on the 16th. And she promised to look out for me in case I run into trouble in that cold water. So, Special Olympics plunge, March the ninth, big deal. It's a big deal. And finally, on Octo, or sorry, February the 13th, 4:00 PM, the Outer Banks Community Foundation is holding a grand opening of their new office facility in Mantio at 704 Highway 64 in Mantio. Outer Banks Community Foundation, February the 13th, 4:00 PM. Should be a cool event. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. I got my tickets for the Dueling Pianos.
Yeah, so do I.
So I'm looking forward.
So do I.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know, Mr. Bassnights.
I'm going, yes.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
But guess what?
What?
I'm not going formal, I can tell you that.
It's semi-formal.
It's semi-formal.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
You have to put socks on with your.
Listen, the photo they had of the Dueling Pianos, everybody's in jeans and t-shirts.
No jeans or t-shirts, I hope, I pray. Please, people, don't show up in jeans and t-shirts.
But I look forward to attending, it looks like it's.
Me too, it's gonna be a good time. I'll see you guys there, I will be there too.
And no tippy-toeing in the, in the polar plunge. I wanna see a full, wet body.
Mary promised to go pull me out if I run into trouble and I'm out there, so.
Is it at Jeanette's Pier?
I believe we will do it at Jeanette's Pier. We have a planning meeting for the plunge that morning at 11:00.
Gotcha.
And she and I have agreed to do the plunge in absentia, since we won't be here on the ninth. We're both out of town. But our contributions will be made and we will be in the water. You'll be on the ninth, Commissioner Bateman, yes?
I'll be there.
Yes, you will. Sorry, I won't be there, pardon. I know you and I usually are there together.
Kirk loves that stuff, buddy, he'd jump right in.
Commissioner House.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like I said, on the State of the County, it was excellent production. My thanks goes out to our staff to help put that on and, and my fellow commissioners too, for doing everything they've done to it. I can't tell you how many phone calls and peoples I've seen on the street thanking us for everything that we do. And, and that really means a lot. I did want to mention three people. Two of them we've already mentioned, Bobby Owens, Mr. Bobby. I can't say enough about the man. He served as chairman here, served as a mayor. He's actually one of the very first people I met when I came to Dare County. So definitely icon in this area. And Ms. Sharon Peel Kennedy, she was just like, like I said, an outspoken person for our, our Waterman. And with her culinary expertise and, and not only with doing a cookbook and all that, but also her radio shows of What's for Supper. Whenever I hear the term What's for Supper, I'm thinking about Sharon Peel Kennedy. She was just one of those people. The third person I'd like to, to mention was an icon in Towne Kitty Hawk. He was assistant fire chief for Kitty Hawk Volunteer Fire Department for decades. And a very outstanding gentleman, United States Marine veteran and a business, business person himself, Mr. Jesse Waters. He's one of those down-to-earth people that, quiet at times, but every now and then he'd hit you with a one-liner and the whole place would just erupt in laughter. And I can't tell you, I learned a lot from him. And Jesse, I know you're listening and I'll see you again on the top floor, man. As far as the Organizational Task Force, we do have an opening on the task force. And we reached out and Greg Mayer, the captain of Fish and Frenzy, has expressed an interest in being on the task force. I've talked to him extensively on that. And I do have the, the, the recommendation from the Organizational Task Force to appoint Greg Mayer to the task force. And I'd like to make that motion at this time.
All right, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen, I know Greg will make a, a big impression on the task force itself. Our day in history, 1789. A unanimous vote of the United States Electoral College elected General George Washington to be our first president of the United States. And for the best part of any commissioner meeting, meet Lindsey, our pet of the week.
All right, there we go.
Our pet of the week this week is Lindsey Sterling. Lindsey Sterling is a one-year-old domestic short-haired cat. She loves cuddles, playing with the wand, laying in the window and watching the birds, and basking in the sun. She also gets along well with other cats. To adopt Lindsey Sterling or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Mantio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So please, take a couple moments out of your day, run down to the SPCA and adopt Lindsey or any other animal out there too, to give them their forever home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also like to express my thanks and congratulations to our employee of the month, Eileen, and employee of the year, Dustin. Appreciate it, Dustin's still with us, top-notch, pardon, appreciate you. Also, as you'll see on the screen, there's a, a copy of a flyer. This is, Dr. McConney Peel is doing a Give Kids a Smile campaign. This is on Friday, February 23rd. It will be for children K through 12 of age. It'll be at 2038 Highway 45 in One Cheese. This is where her practice is located. Following services will be provided free of charge. X-rays, cleaning and fluoride treatments, and any dental emergencies that might exist. Dr. Peel is doing this, and I spoke with Dr. Gunther Hyder. And he is providing two additional dentists and one hygienist for half a day. If anyone knows of any hygienist who would like to participate in this, we could use a couple more. Please ask them to call Dr. Peel at Peel Family Dentistry and just work, work the details out with her. Want to say thank you to her for doing this, this is, this is a really big deal. And we're looking to expand it and hopefully some work is going on to possibly expand it further next year. But if kids need to be looked at, get them over here for this free clinic. Just call and, call her office and sign up. Her number, office number to schedule an appointment for, for that day is 252-473-5774.
Well, how did this originate?
Actually, Dr. Peel, this is the third year that she has been doing it.
That's fantastic, I am really encouraged.
It's, it's a, it's a good deal and.
Terrific.
I'm, I'm working with Sheila, we're going to have a meeting, I think it's going to be in May, of several dentists and try to expand this throughout Dare County. So it's, it's a big deal. But Dr. McConney Peel's the one that got this started. Big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hatters product.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Yeah, go Hatters, huh?
Hatters.
Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. Yeah, um, just to acknowledge Sharon and Jesse, two fine people. I got a Bobby Owens story for you. So I'd just gone through my spiritual awakening and change of life, 35 years old. And I used Bobby as my mentor for a lot of stuff. I'd call him up and talk to him. And the best advice he ever gave me is to get involved. And the, the scenario I was fussing about, there was a tree at the end of the woods road in Kitty Hawk. And it was blocking the stop sign. And I've been fussing about it, and he said, listen, the best advice I can give you, if you are worried about that tree blocking the stop sign and you tell me there's been two wrecks there, get a chainsaw and cut the tree down or move the stop sign and get involved. Put yourself to, in a position to enact change. Don't talk about it. Don't fuss about it to me, get involved. And that was a pretty good, wise statement coming from a very wise man. And I, he was a friend of mine, good guy. Thanks for letting me share.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner. And two other, I have just two things real quick. Dustin, congratulations and well-deserved. We're fortunate to have Dustin do what he does for us and run down these projects. And he does an excellent job and it's something we don't have to worry about and he gets it done. So thank you, Dustin, for what you do. And then fortunately, I was close enough to Bobby Owens over the years that I could go by his house, pull in the back, walk up to the back door and just walk in. And then go sit down and visit with him. And I had the pleasure of doing that, once again, I did it many times. But had lunch with him with Mayor's a number of times and had breakfast with him on, on quite a few times as well. But the last time I visited, it was, it was very emotional, you know, just to see, see the way he was. But just a, just a principled guy and a true friend that I will cherish. So with that being said, County Manager, do you have anything else for us today?
Yes, sir, I do. Under the, our budget rules, if, I have the authority to move money from one department to another department. But when I do that, I have to come to you and report that. So I'm reporting that we moved money for the First Flight Field Maintenance. We had some carryover funds in the maintenance and repair line over in buildings and grounds. We moved that money into Parks and Rec to pay for the Parks and Rec grounds there at First Flight Schools. That amount was $250,020. And it moved from the maintenance and repair to the field improvement lines. And so I'm just giving you that, you don't have to do anything, but I'm having to report that out as we're required to do. Let's see, the second thing is, at, I think it was the last meeting, I told you all about some of the issues we were having in our sanitation department with getting drivers and, and that sort of thing. And that I would do some more work and come back to you. And so I've done some of that work and I'm gonna report back and, and let you all consider options and, and sort of give us some guidance on what you're thinking. And if, if one of these options is something that you want to tell us to go ahead and do, we can. If you need more information or we need to work on other things, then we can do that as well. But we're getting to a point where we're concerned about the summer. We have 17 CDL driver positions when we're full, fully staffed. Right now, we have three vacant positions, we haven't filled. We have two workers, two on workers' comp, one with a heart condition. We don't know what their duration of being out will be or whether they'll even come back. And we have two who are eligible to retire whenever they feel like it. They've got enough years and time in to retire. So our concern is, if everything went the worst it could go, we would go from, we'd lose eight of our 17 drivers any time, which would be a problem for us. We're five down right now. With 12 drivers, we're getting by. We're, we're able to do our jobs, they're working the overtime, they're willing to do it. How long they're willing to continue doing it, what'll happen when we get busy, we don't know. And so we want to be a little bit proactive to try to get ahead of it so that we don't find ourselves in July and August, all of a sudden, wondering how we're gonna get, you know, the garbage picked up. So we need to do some kind of solutions pretty soon. And, and talking with Shannon, talking with Dave, we've been through our ideas. And certainly, if you have other ideas, we want to hear those as well. You know, the first thing, everybody comes to mind is let's contract it out. Just get out of the sanitation business and contract it out. We've looked at that several times. You know, the, the pros of doing that are it gets us out of sanitation business and we don't have to deal with it. But there are a number of cons, if you will. The first is the likely cost. With the distance to Hatters, the cost of moving trash, especially in the private sector, is gonna be a lot, if we even got bidders. When we tried to bid out the recycling down there, the curbside recycling, we got no bidders. And we got no bidders, even if we were willing to subsidize it sufficiently to make it where they would be making a profit and could do it. We still didn't get bidders. And so the idea that we could do that would be, I think, unlikely or very expensive if we did. The second thing is things we've talked about before, once, even if you could find a favorable contract, once you get out of it, get rid of all your employees, get rid of all your trucks, now they've got you on the second contract, you can't, you don't have any negotiating leverage. And it costs you millions of dollars to get back in the business because you gotta buy the trucks again and all those sorts of things. So that doesn't seem to be a, a good option. Second thing we looked at was, could we contract out selected areas? Kitty Hawk, could we, we pick up Kitty Hawk, they pay us to pick it up? Could we simply tell them, you go contract it? The problem with that is, is two things. Is, one is, the rate for those citizens would likely go up. The second thing is, when we, we get a revenue, they pay us and it goes into our sanitation fund. But it's not a one-to-one. So by cutting them off, our revenue and our costs aren't a one-to-one mix because we still have our fixed costs that are part of the department. So we don't lose trucks. We, we might lose one person, but we wouldn't lose two or three that drive up there. And so the net result is there's gonna be a revenue decline and a cost to us by getting rid of, of that. And the same would hold true if we tried to do, I'll just use Kitty Hawk as an example, any of the other areas in the county. If you try to do a small area like, say, Stumpy Point, it's unlikely that someone would bid on something that's small. And so for lots of reasons, contracting out doesn't seem to work or seem to be a good idea. Which then means, okay, how do we retain and obtain employees? And what we found is, we did all that work we did with our salary study, we gave all the raises we did, we spent a whole pile of money doing that. And when we looked two weeks ago, three weeks ago, we're still eight or 10, $7,000 to $10,000 behind Naxhead on what we pay our sanitation drivers. And so when there are openings available, we're not the first choice. And when, when or if we are the first choice, the first opening that comes in Naxhead, our drivers leave and go to Naxhead. So we're trying to look at, what can we do about that? And what, one of the things that we looked at and we had HR run the numbers was, okay, what have we gotta do to bring our staff in line with their staff? What would it cost us to do that? And just to give you the difference, our lowest paid person is $43,640 without overtime. Their lowest paid person is $51,240 without any overtime. So you can see there's a big wage gap there. So what we, I had them do is run numbers to say, if we took all of our folks and raised them to where they were at the minimum, you know, what would it cost us? And, and adjust the people that had been here longer to keep the compression like it is. So everybody wouldn't be making the same thing, you would raise the salaries. There's several ways we can do that. If we just take the difference in pay right off of that and raise them and keep, if, if I make $1,000 more than you, once we do all this, I make $1,000 more than you. That's about a $214,000 cost to do that annually. If we use the percentage differential, if I'm making 4% more than you and when we finish this, I'm gonna make 4% more than you, that costs us about $235,000. That's our most expensive option, but that keeps the compression pretty much where it is today. And then if you use just a 1% differential between you and I, that would be $164,000. And if we used a 2% differential, that'd be a $220,000 differential. So from our perspective, to keep the compression right and to keep us in tune with those others, it would cost us $235,000 a year. That would mean that if we did that and started it on March the 1st, then that's roughly four months. It'd cost us $80,000 for the rest of this year. And in our next budget, we'd have to allocate $235,000 more dollars in the budget to do that. The goal of that is to keep what we have and then make our positions attractive. We think that that can be certainly successful in keeping what we have. But it may make our positions attractive because we do have overtime when they don't. because we do have overtime when they don't. You know, we've talked about overtime before. We can hire a person and pay benefits, and it costs the same thing as allowing somebody to get time and a half to do overtime. And so there's an opportunity for these drivers to even make more when we do that, which we hope would attract drivers. What we're doing already, we've already implemented, is we're hiring non-CDL drivers. Anybody that thinks they want to drive, we'll hire them right now and pay them a salary and send them to CDL school and pay them while they're in school. And when they get out of CDL school and come back to work for us, we'll raise their salary to whatever the salary structure is for a new driver. And we've got two people in that program that has success, been some successful in getting people in the program as well. And then we have other CD drivers in the county that do other things. And in an emergency, what we would like to do is tap those drivers, but give them a pay differential. So if they're being paid at whatever the rate is at, at the landfill, and we move them to drive a trash truck, the difference between their salary and a trash truck's salary for the time that they drive, we would give them that pay differential to compensate them for coming over and helping us out of a jam. And those three things are the things that we would recommend and ask your approval to move forward with. I'm looking to see if there's anything else on my list. No, that, those are it. Those are the, the only options that we could come up with. The chairman and I, how many years ago was it, Mr. Chairman? When we tried to look at going to one day a week scheduling, and we ran all the numbers, and we had a tablet full of spreadsheets. But, you know, you got a million tons of garbage. It has to be moved. Whether you move it all in one day or move it in two days, you're still moving a million tons of garbage, and you got to, it takes a certain number of hours to do that. So there really wasn't a whole lot of savings we found, right, Mr. Chairman?
That's correct.
When we looked at doing that.
Yeah.
And so we didn't, we never did it. And so that's kind of where we are. And so I need to know your thoughts and your guidance. And, yes, sir.
So is the 235 going to match Killover Hills and Nag's Head?
It will.
Okay. Would it not be to our advantage to go beyond that?
Ah, there we go.
Yep.
And just say, hey, listen, we appreciate you. And, because all they're going to do is, I call it, like, you know, cop shop, is they're going to just, they're going to
Raise your five.
And they, and it's a never-ending battle.
So I thought about that. So let's just say we added five. We went from, to 55. So now we're $5,000 ahead of Nag's Head. As soon as they lose a driver to us, they're going to raise us.
They're going to raise.
And so I'm hoping if we keep them even, their guys won't come here. Our guys won't go there, and we can maintain the status quo. And then if they do raise us, for us to raise them, it's only a $5,000, not a $10,000 step to get there.
I just, I want to, yeah, sorry, I want to go ahead of you.
I don't know if my logic is any better than your logic, but that's how I was looking at it.
You know, initially, you know, the thought that comes to mind is, well, you know, what's sheriff's department driver's going to say? What's other departments going to say? You did it for them. Why aren't you doing it for us? But we're talking about an emergency need here. We're talking about something specific with the CDL. That is a specialty skill. And I think this is justified. I like what I'm hearing. And if there's going to be pushback, or if, and I know you anticipated it, but this, this, that's a skill in my mind. That's, that's a certification. And I, I think that helps address pushback.
As vice chairman, another question.
I think we need to adopt a policy of we aren't losing another driver to a municipality. And we need, need to make that clear. And the analogy that I would use in that is from my old business days in the textile industry, when one company would, on a particular product, would go out there and, because they wanted to, to capture a certain business, would, would drop the price a nickel a pound. Well, the, the folks that have the business find that out, so they drop theirs a nickel a pound. And that goes on and goes on, until finally one of them decides, I ain't losing another pound of business. And wherever that first crowd wants to go, the crowd that's got the business follows it. Now, that goes down a deep hole. And eventually, though, it stops. But I think we need to take a position that we're not losing any more of our drivers to the municipalities. We're going to bring the, the salaries up to parity, and that's where we're going to keep them. And we're going to do what we got to do to keep our drivers. I think providing the CDL training and then getting them here is great. If we keep this differential we have now, what do they do? First opening that they have, as you pointed out, Bobby, they go to a municipality. And we need to cut that off at the knees. I'm, I'm 100% for what you're talking about doing.
Let me ask you this, Bobby. Have you thought about a sign and bonus that would entice, entice somebody to come over?
Not, no. So you, if we don't, we have a, you talking about in, in addition to what we're doing or all by itself?
No, in addition.
All right, no, we, we didn't talk about that. Again, we just, that one, that didn't come up. A certain, we something we could do. Again, with other departments that are having difficulties hiring people, we haven't done that. I don't have any other departments that the potential is as serious as this, which is why this is before you. The sheriff has some difficulty from time to time hiring, but he's doing a process where he does just what we just described about the CDLs. He brings people in, sends them to BLET, and then brings them on as a sheriff, and they've been paid while they're at BLET. And so that's worked for him. He's, I don't know about today. He's getting at or close to having all his positions filled. You know, I know we have some issues sometimes with nurses. We have some issues with home health folks. Yeah. And so, so, yeah, I think it's a matter of the criticality of the service and the potential for what would happen if we don't address it quickly. And this one came to the forefront.
I'd like to support the three points you made, Bobby. As a start, see where we are, reassess, perhaps, the end of the season. Do we have to do more? Would that work for you?
Well, we'd do it. And if, yeah, if we have a problem, we'll bring it back to you.
Yeah. Works for me.
Do you need a vote on that or consensus?
I need a vote.
Second.
Okay. It's been, been moved by the vice chairman and seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Likewise?
Dave, I'm assuming we've got the money in lap salaries to cover it for the end of the year.
Well, that's a good point. We do. I'm sure he does.
If not, we'll have to bring a budget into the back.
Yeah, so that's why I was asking. I don't think we need a budget amendment. Okay.
God, I got that. Would, Bobby, would it, would it help? Dorothy's staff's been very good about when I've suggested videos and stuff. Just like I said earlier, we're, during the pandemic, I had multiple videos. We're getting ready to release one on housing. Would it, would it be, would, would this make any sense of doing a video with respects to the help we need for CDL drivers?
I'll have Dorothy get with Shannon and see if there's a way we can do a recruiting video. We have put signs on the back of our trash trucks that drive all over the county.
Right.
Advertising the need for CDL.
The only sign I've seen advertising, I don't want to.
Yeah.
That and bait and tackle.
So, so, yes, well.
Thank you.
I think, oh, I've got two more things. We need to schedule a public hearing for our Phase Three bonds for the Mans Harbor, Kitty Hawk, and Youth Center projects that are going to be our next thing. And so we need to have that bond hearing at our March meeting. And so we need you all to authorize that public hearing for the March meeting.
Do it. You need a motion?
I do.
Okay. So moved by a vice chair, seconded by a commissioner house. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
I don't think we talked about it as a board. I may have talked to some of you individually. But in our budget ordinance, we have a fee schedule for all of our fees. And for our building permits, did we talk about this? The building permits and the renewal? So when you get a building permit, you pay a fee. And as long as you do some work and get an inspection within a year, your thing, your building permit continues. And it can continue indefinitely as long as each year you get a, an inspection and you, and you've done some work on it to require an inspection. We had a situation arise that I don't think you all can resolve, that a gentleman has been trying to build a house in Stumpy Point for 20 years using that. He's building it all alone. Him, no help. Him, just him. And he let his time expire. And when, when Noah told him he needed to get a new building permit, and he had to pay the fee, he didn't like having to go through all that, and he called me. And I told him I didn't have the authority to waive.
How much is the fee?
It'll be $2,000 to $3,000 for him. Had it been, it expired yesterday, and he came in today, you know, if it had been last week, maybe if it had been last month. But it had been, like, over a year where he hadn't done anything. And I said, I didn't really have the ability to, to help him at all and, and couldn't help him. And the more I thought about it, I really don't have the authority, if it had been yesterday, to amend the fee schedule that you all adopt in your budget ordinance without your approval to do that. And so I, I don't think a year is reasonable for us to waive something and give somebody grace, because then we might as well just not have a time limit at all, which doesn't make sense because the codes change and the level of work. We have to do changes and all that sort of thing with people extended out that long. But I did think that maybe we should consider giving the manager some authority. It's just an inconvenience. It doesn't change our workload. It's an oversight. Some kind of latitude, if it's less than 30 days, if it's less than two weeks, then I have the authority to waive them without having to come back to you. So we can help people that just get caught in a rat race and don't do what they're supposed to do, as opposed to someone that lets something go by for, you know, more than a year and didn't do what they're supposed to do, knowing they had to do it.
What's the rationale for 20 years? As he's not building a Walmart.
He's building it all by himself, one nail at a time. Every nail that's been driven, every board that's been cut, everything that's been lifted.
It's not dry, but one nail a week.
He's, he's doing it all by himself.
But that's a gross violation of the process.
He's done it, up until recently, he's gotten his inspection every year. He's done enough work to require another inspection. And by the building code, that keeps his, his, his building permit going. Again, I'm not trying to help this guy out. I'm trying to, we're going to have one where the guy comes in, and he was supposed to come in on Friday, and he, his wife got sick, and he didn't make it. Now it's Monday, and his time's expired. I need the ability to help that guy out.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay, I, I
And the fees are ours. So whether we waive the fee or don't waive the fee is up to us. That's not part of the building code. Now, the expiration of his permit, he still has, we can't waive him getting a new permit. He has to do that, whether it's one day or one year. But the fee part of it, we do control.
Do, what do municipalities, I know that some building restrictive covenants and stuff, you know, you get six months, and you better have your, at least your exterior done. Does anybody familiar with the, do the municipalities have that same kind of on and on and on renewal?
I think they're all under the building code, and I think the same rules apply to everyone. I think. Again, I'm not familiar whether a town has adopted some, I would, if you asked me, could we adopt that ordinance, my first thought is you've been preempted because we have a state building code that tells you what the rules are. We couldn't go in and change the state rules, but I don't, I can't tell you a town hasn't tried to do that.
Right. Okay, building code's right. It's great.
So you're asking us to give you the discretionary.
Well, I'm asking you to give me a, what do you think's a reasonable time where I have discretion? 30 days?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's fair.
That's fair.
Okay, then I would need a motion to amend. Can we do that, Dave? Amend the budget ordinance to do that?
I was going to ask you, do we need to include it in the annual ordinance?
Maybe we, maybe we need to wait and do it in the, I got to look. If we can do it now with your permission, y'all vote, we'll do it. If not, then we'll do it in the budget ordinance when we do the budget in June.
Okay.
So go ahead and approve it. And I got to look to see if we're authorized to do that.
Those in favor, that signify by saying aye. Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then at the appropriate time, I need a closed session.
Yep, we'll do that after, see if our public information officer has anything for us today.
The only thing I've mentioned is that we're going to adjust them to confirm a date for the ribbon cutting and open house for the Southern Shore Station, Station Four, mid-March. You may have gotten a date. 15th, I think. We haven't announced it yet. But the way we're going to kind of publicize that, just because of the parking, we're going to open a wide window for people to stop by and then just start with the ribbon.
What day of the week is that, Skylar?
I believe it's a Friday.
Friday.
And it's also, what, you know what time the school's going to be?
That was out of town.
So I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Finance director, Mr. Clausen, do you have anything else for us?
Yes, sir.
All right. We need a motion to adjourn to a closed session. You want to read the?
I need a motion for a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, receive an update, and, and to approve the minutes, the attorney-client privileges with regard to the Baker McKenzie matter and to the O'Hare matter. And I also need a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A5 to instruct the county staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by on behalf of the county in negotiation the price of other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property in the matter of the Davidson property.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
By Commissioner House, seconded by Commissioner Bateman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, oppose. Motion carries unanimous. Our call to Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over to county manager?
In the closed session, the board approved the minutes of the last closed session, gave the county attorney advice on the negotiating agents to behalf of the county on the acquisition of property, the Davidson matter. And we discussed the Baker McKenzie settlement as well as the Ohio, O'Hare settlement. We talked about the Baker McKenzie. That's an occupancy tax issue. We've been offered an unknown sum of money that we'll fetter out to move through with the Baker McKenzie Law Firm up in New York to obtain that oxytax funding. And you've authorized me to, to go forward with that and obtain those funds and sign the documents to, to get those. And I need a motion to that effect from you all for me to move forward.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Couch, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then the other matters, the O'Hare matter, that's an employment issue that's been going on now for, I don't know, more than a year. We reached a settlement in that one. The settlement amount is $650,000. The reason that we recommended that settlement is that our litigation costs are growing incrementally. As I told you previously, the discovery alone was reaching 15,000 documents that had to be, no, 115,000 documents that needed to be reviewed by us and by our counsel and their counsel. And then our risk on the other end could have exceeded, well exceeded that. So all in all, from a financial perspective, the settlement is basically a financial decision to cut our losses because we would spend that even if we won the lawsuit. So we're cutting our losses, we're settling it, and then we're moving forward. And I need a motion for you all to approve that settlement and authorize me to settle the various settlement documents as they're prepared. And
Build it first.
Okay, before you approve that, I need a motion for Okay. Before you approve that, I need a motion for a budget amendment. Where are we taking it from, Dave?
Insurance and Risk Management.
To take funds from the Insurance and Risk Management Fund to use for this purpose. So I need a motion to approve that budget amendment first.
Move to approve the budget.
There's a motion to approve the budget amendment by Vice Chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then, secondly, I need authorization to approve the settlement as outlined, and it'll authorize me to sign the various settlement documents that are prepared to consummate the settlement.
Move to do so and prepare those documents.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And that's everything, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to the close of our February five meeting. And I need a motion to adjourn until March the fourth. A motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.